And this is to deliberate on the views of the public who have submitted on it. So we're going to jump straight into it if it's okay. You all have a hard copy in front of you of the Draft Walking and Cycling Strategy Summary of Feedback, that is going to be the decision document that we will work through later on. But to start with, the first submitter is not turning up. So Tony Durham is going to take us straight, I think, to page 24, which is the results of our place, our planned responses. Tony, I'll hand over to you to give us an explanation, then we'll go through it.
Sure thing. Thank you, councillor Mackay. So with us having a little bit of time before we get into hearing our first submitters come along today, what we thought we could do is look at our place, our planned responses that we received last September. And what we've done here is we've just extracted any that refer back to walking and cycling, because it's just another set of information that we could use as informing the finalisation of the walking and cycling strategy. So on page 24 of your summary document, which is the white one, it looks like that at the front, you've got a hard copy on your desk. We've got these collated for you. We're in your hands in terms of if there's anything there that you think should be incorporated or we need to give some further thought to, to the final strategy.
No one else, I'll start the ball rolling if you like. There's this, down near the bottom of general comments, there's stop putting strips of weeds in our footpaths to make them narrower. Better footpaths with less grass verges as they become neglected, and footpaths with attention with overgrowing vegetation. About, councillor Wilson may be able to help me out. It was five, six years ago, there was a decision made that when putting in new footpaths, there would be a green strip to make the town look more beautiful. I think it's that green strip they were talking about. There was much debate at the time, councillor Wilson wasn't on the cost versus the attraction. Maybe you might like to comment.
Yes, Mr Chairman, I thought it was more, we could do twice as much or nearly 50% or 40% more footpaths, and also if we had to dig up utilities, it was easier to stick it down the grass strip. But it all depends on how enthusiastic people are to maintain. I see in Christchurch, there's a real dispute, some lady wants to grow hers long and rank. So I mean, that's, but that was the decision, to get more redone, new ceiling done for distance and utilities.
Councillor Brown.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I think there's another reason as well, and it is basically the running off of water footpath onto the roading. So having the grass berm, it's a verge, and it basically stops the water going onto the stormwater system, it basically dissipates there and cleans itself. That is another part of it. And Ashburton is certainly not the only place who has this system. I think it's more a lack of pride, some of the people, not maintaining the path. It's not only council has to do the work, every person living in this district has some input in how they want to live and how they want to have it.
Okay. Councillor Letham.
Thank you. Green strips on footpaths, I don't know whether they're a good idea or not. They're certainly an absolute disaster on the roadside, because if you've got plants coming over from people's dwellings, there's not a lot of room to get down some footpaths in this town. I think Middle Road is probably, top end of Middle Road is quite bad there. The other major gripe I have about footpaths is footpaths should be on the one level, rather than being lowered for cars to go in and out. Because if you're walking along and you're not really taking much notice of where you're walking, you come along to where the footpath goes down, all of a sudden your foot goes down and you're damn near arse up. So, you know, it's bloody dangerous.
Okay, so as far as councillor Wilson.
I used to think that the grass booms were a good idea, but I don't anymore since I've been a councillor, and particularly since we brought in wheelie bins. Because you try and walk down some of the footpaths with wheelie bins, and you see a lot of comments all the time from people on mobility scooters, mothers with push chairs, about the lack of space, and especially once the bins have been emptied and they're not put back in the line that they were at the gutter edge, they're all over the place. It's a nightmare for people. And the third point is, I've had a lot of comments from elderly people who, I've had a lady one day on Malcolm Street just about crying, telling me she didn't know what to do with her grass berm, because she didn't even own a mower, and she had no intentions of owning a mower anymore, she was too old, and council went and put grass outside on Malcolm Street. So those are my thoughts on it.
Mr Firth.
Basically, the grass verge, as you call it, was put in, not from the point of view of beautification or anything of that nature, but from a stormwater avenue. The problem we've got is that we've got the very deep open, or the drains that are there that are old. They are a stormwater retention device as well as a means of getting rid of stormwater. When we change it to the curb and channel profile, which is the modern way of doing things, we haven't got the storage capacity that we used to have for the stormwater. And so what we're trying to do is slow things down by bringing in a grass strip which basically soaks up or helps to soak up some of that stormwater before it gets into the stormwater system as such. And that is the method we've used. We've gone to a one and a half metre footpath, and we've taken the footpath to the curb side, away from the boundary side, to get away from plantings etcetera that are coming from people's gardens, and also to put the infrastructure, such as EA Networks, Corus, those type of things, in that grass strip, so that if and when they need replacing or repair, it is so much simpler to go and get to that infrastructure. So they are the two main reasons why we've gone the way we have, not for any beautification reason or anything else, but more for practicality of the way we put our infrastructure into the district at this point in time.
Okay, councillor. Councillor Lovett.
I'm just going to say the only comment I'm getting back from people that perhaps, could we widen any new footpath, just a little wider, so people can actually pass on the paved area instead of going on the grass.
The idea of the shared path situation is to widen those paths where we're going to use them for the more active modes, which is the cycling, your mobility scooters, your scooters themselves, the electric scooters etcetera. So that's what we're trying to do under this walking and cycling strategy, is widen certain areas only, or certain paths only, so that we have a dual function for those particular paths.
Right, councillors. Do any of you wish to alter the strategy to meet the responses in any shape or form? Councillor Brown.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I'm quite happy as it is, to be quite honest. I know it doesn't matter what you do, there will always someone who is not happy with it. One and a half metres wide footpath, you should be able to pass it quite easy. I know the scooters we've got, they are about 800, 900 mils wide, so yes, you have to slow down a wee bit, but it's also quite nice to talk to people instead of running past. I can see the benefits the way it is, it is cheaper to fix. It's been said before there as well, on the end of the table, it helps with the stormwater systems. If you start doing one thing, you will have to do something else as well, or if you think you make a better decision for a wider footpath, you might find more repairs to be done who are going not being fixed properly, etcetera, etcetera. So I'm quite happy the way the system is.
Agree? Disagree? Councillor McMillan.
I agree, I think, I just don't see any point in widening any other footpaths except for those in the strategy, I think the other ones that we need to look at. That's up with you.
Okay. Councillor Wilson.
No, councillor Lethem. Thank you, Mr Chairman. Yes, I agree also, I think the reasons put forward by Mr Firth are logical and common sense, and I think we should continue with the present programme.
Okay. Councillor Wilson.
Only thing I disagree with is the dogmatic way we say that the seal has got to be next to the road. Sometimes on Nixon Street, the seal is next to the houses and the grass is out on the verge towards the road, because down Tarbottoms Road, you've got quite a swale that carries water. Are we, how are we going to put the seal next to the road and still carry the water? So I know the subdivision wanted to put the seal next to the houses, and the council definitely said no, so they abandoned the project. We would have had a footpath there if the council had been a little bit more understanding or meeting them halfway. So I know I can see Mr Firth's strategy, but in some cases, if the developer puts up a really good case, under the circumstances of the topography of the road, we should be able to accept some sort of variation.
In all fairness, Mr Firth's view is what councils, a council in the past has decided. Mr McCain, would you like to comment, is it possible to meet councillor Wilson's request going forward?
Through the chair, yes, we can certainly look at individual cases, and certainly where developers are prepared to do work like that. Bear in mind, we do need to look at the long term and what we plan to do on that road and widening and what we've got planned, but certainly we'll look at those on a case by case basis.
So what would the process be if a developer wanted to do that?
It normally comes through our development engineering process and goes to the roading manager for their comment.
Councillor Wilson. Happy? Okay. We'll now move on, a few more minutes, we'll move on to the rural town footpaths, has anyone got any comment?
Thanks, Mr Chairman. While we're on footpaths generally, I think we should really take into account where footpaths go across road crossings. Because the councillors had that day, was it last year, on those mobile things, they found it, I know people have complained that it's made allowance for water to get round the corner, but when you're on a mobile scooter things with the flag, quite often though, quite, the angles are not right, and I think we should really take into account, there's more and more of those getting around, also elderly people with walking frames, we have to make sure that they can get from the footpath across the road and out again. So I think we should take, really take a point of view when we're redoing footpaths to take that into account.
Councillor Wilson.
I could comment on that, because I was one who did that trial on the mobility scooters, getting in practice for the future. But the worst one is the Midot Ten corner, where you come from Midot Ten, crossing West Street, to heading towards the farmers' side, and the hollow you go through there, if you went through there in a hurry, you'd just about buck yourself right off the mobility scooter. But I agree, it is a concern, because it's the elderly who are using those, but that was the worst one, I can't say that any of the others I found too bad. But visibility, when you're sitting down at that level, I tell you what, you should all try it, it's quite frightening.
Okay. Councillor Brown.
Just to comment, the centre of town hall is getting redone, those footpaths and crossings are really quite nice, they are really, if they all could be like that, it would be great.
Okay. Councillor Wilson.
The only other thing with our new footpaths, or our new CBD, some of those lines have been brought up before, while we're on footpaths, it's very confusing at the community house corner, because there are white lines across the road. They're not officially a footpath, but people are taking them as a footpath. Why there's two lines, there should only be one line at the give way sign, I feel, line, so you know that there's no footpath there, because it definitely looks like a footpath to me. But a lot of people that don't know, they treat it as a footpath and just step out when it's not actually a footpath. Once they get used to it, perhaps they've got all those yellow dots to tell you it is a footpath, but I wonder why we put a double lot of white lines there, to make it look like a pedestrian crossing, let's not one.
Okay. We'll take one more while we're here, the sports development, sporting activity. It's very difficult, as I understand it, for us to fix up the Tinwood Cycling Track, because that's actually a private sports body, trust. So we'll have to leave that as is, or do you want to refer it to them, or they know anyway, don't they?
I think they are.
Can you go through?
I think they are, because they're not part of the domain, it's a complete, yeah, private club really, but I'm pretty sure if they want to fix it up, they can go for a grant. So I'm more than happy with something like that. But yeah, there are no connections to the town to reserve board or anything like that. But it's been a good club for years.
Okay, councillors, we're very close to the time for the first submitter, and I don't see him here. Mr Lowe, you're down for, to be heard at 9.30, would you be ready to go now?
Yes.
If you'd like to come forward, please. And councillors, you'll find Mr Lowe's submission on page 68 on Stella. Sorry, sorry.
55.
55 on Stella. Welcome, Mr Lowe, the floor is yours.
Thank you, councillor Angus, is that what I say? No, councillor Mackay, whatever, something like that. Good morning, councillors, I'm just going to read out what I've written down here as an afterthought to my original submission. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to my submission, of course. A town like Ashburton is ideally set up for residents to use bicycles for recreation and to go to and from work. I commend the council for seeking submissions on the cycling and walkway policy. I wish to support the council's cycling and walkway proposals, but specifically want to mention the western Tinwood area. I moved into Tarbottoms Road nine years ago, when it was a relatively quiet country road. Councillors will be aware that several subdivisions have been developed over the last couple of years, namely the Oakley and Kelburn developments. These subdivisions now have over 100 new houses occupied, and approximately 60 more sections ready to build on, and there is likely to be several other blocks of land in the vicinity becoming housing in the not too distant future. I've noted the increase in population in this area is reflected in the number of people using Tarbottoms Road as an exercise area for both walking and cycling. Elderly couples, dog walkers, mums and dads with small children on bikes, young mothers out for strollers with strollers, and the road being used during the day and evenings. People use Tarbottoms Road as it forms a circuit in west Tinwood for them to exercise within their area without having to cross the main road or head up the roads going inland. Part of this circuit is on Lagmore Road, from the Scout Den, past the Pony Club grounds to the Tarbottoms Road corner, a distance of approximately 600 metres. Despite a 60 kilometre speed limit along this stretch, I've experienced vehicles travelling much faster than that as they enter Tinwood. On dry days, people are able to walk on the unkept grass verge, but when the grass is wet, people are forced to use the road. I suggest that a pathway for walkers and cyclists be established along Lagmore Road with some urgency, there is there sure to be an incident someday. Along Tarbottoms Road, which now has a 50 kilometre speed limit, again, I would suggest that not many people observe, there is a large volume of traffic specifically related to the building of houses on the subdivisions, and I suspect and hope the council has plans for this road to be upgraded. A footpath is urgently needed on the one kilometre of narrow rural road on the western end of Tarbottoms Road. If the road is widened to the same as the eastern end, then a footpath would suffice, as cyclists would have room to use the road. I support the establishment of cycleways in Ashburton, especially where they lead to public places such as sports grounds, the EA Centre and the Domain. Safe access to venues such as those I've mentioned would certainly encourage more participation by walkers and cyclists and mobility users. I commend the council for this strategy, and I thank you for your time this morning.
Okay. Are you willing to answer questions?
Of course, if there's any question, certainly.
Councillors, councillor Brown.
Good morning, John. You realise that you've got a proposal there about the coast from Tarbottoms Development through the wee reserve and comes out at the Scouts Den?
No, I don't.
Okay. Because we've been looking at Tinwood, what you're asking for, I think is basically being addressed at council.
Oh, that's good to hear, I didn't know.
Almost of it. So it's certainly in the programme. And that corner you talked about is certainly a dangerous one, would you like to think?
Doesn't need to come along then, does it?
No, no, it's good to hear, it's good to hear. So we are on the right track.
That's good. I wanted to commend the council on this, I think it's a step forward, I really do.
Councillor Wilson.
Thanks, Mr Chairman. Morning, John. I haven't got a conflict of interest really, because I live out on my money.
We are Tarbottoms Road.
I see in your early submissions, or one of your submissions, you talked about streetlights, don't you? I believe we need, you would endorse the lack of streetlights down Tarbottoms Road? We've asked developers to put them in, but the council hasn't reciprocated.
Okay. Yeah, I think there is a need, but, I don't know, there'll be constraints, I guess, but yeah, I would favour if the opportunity was there to do it, it should be done, yeah. That's all I'd say. I don't know how urgent it is, but it's certainly going to be used more and more. Tarbottoms Road is certainly becoming a bigger.
Mr Lowe, would you like to take a minute and come up to the map here on the wall, and point to where you wanted that footpath, so it's absolutely clear in our minds?
Yeah, Scout Den's in there, the ever, 600 metres from the other there, and there's a wide verge that's untidy in the east side, there's a concrete path along there, or whatever, at the end of there, and even along the Tarbottom Road corner, along the Steward Tarbottoms House. Then, that's when councillor Wilson's supposed to do. Problem is with swales. Up to about here, that's the street. Up on there, here. Up to about here, this, get here, the road's correct, that's the right turn.
Yep.
If the rest of, along here, was done the same, that's the most efficient, the rest of the road was done properly along there, proper width, then that would take.
Okay. Councillor Brown, can you go through here?
While you're there, what we talked about before, the Scout Den, yeah, go slightly back, and then the line coming straight up, that goes through, no, 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 come back, come back. That is the next one, that is going through the proposal there.
Oh, it's going to be a?
A walk and a bike.
Walking track.
That is the idea, yeah.
Oh, is it?
So that will connect the whole thing through.
Yeah, yeah.
And then coming straight through into the domain as well, so the town domain is getting hooked on as well, if you follow that line.
Yeah, yeah. I have noticed that. I think it's going in, but I still believe it would still hold.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for coming in. Tony, I think Mr Hawke's not here, so we continue on page 25, do we? That was all part of?
Yes, we may as well until James arrives from the mountain bike club.
Okay. Councillors, if you go back to the white hard copy on page 25, there's walkways and cycle trails as a result of our place survey. Do any of you have any comments about the walkways and cycle trails as per our place? Because it will pop up again in submissions at a later stage this afternoon. Councillor Lovett.
I'm just going to ask, all these walkways that have been made, are they on council ground, ECAN's ground or private ground? And the other question I was going to ask, before they make these cycleways, do they ever consult with either ECAN or council, or do the clubs just go ahead and do them?
As I understand it, certainly likes of the trails down the river are very much a joint project with a lot of the key players involved, such as ECAN and DOC and landowners. So I certainly don't think the clubs are going off and just firing from the hip and putting a trail through it without consultation. And from what I understand, in the community, there's a lot of collaborative work that goes on in that space.
Councillor Letham.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Yeah, like councillor Lovett, I'm just a little concerned that we get well intentioned people who... Um, yeah, like councillor Lovett, I'm just a little concerned that we get well-intentioned people who start ventures and clubs and they're very successful at it and they're great and people enjoy them and I'm not, not belittling any of the effort or the benefits of all these things. And then it gets almost too big for them and they say, well, we'll give it to the council. I don't think it's the council's job to look at off-road biking and walking tracks unless there's a very, very good um, case made for extenuating reasons or, or whatever. And you, we can see it over the decades in the past where things have been developed well-intentioned, suddenly they become too big. Suddenly the, the people and the organisations don't have the abilities to run them and, and all the time. And said, oh, well, we'll give them to the council. So I'm not saying we shouldn't, but I'd be very wary about supporting them.
Councillor Brown.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Um, I think the problem we've got here, we're looking at urban, I think the whole setup was set up for urban connections and we're getting a lot of people asking for sport and recreation. I think that is where we, well, didn't go wrong, but I think, I never, I never even thought about the, the bike tracks because it's completely separate to what I thought we were discussing here today. But a lot of people must have understood that it was combined. Um, I'm not sure how we can handle this or do, fix that today. I'd rather stick to what we send out and make sure that the people who came with other ideas um, have been told how they can funding or can get funding. Because it's not really connecting the town as such, it's more recreation and sport. What is great, I, I, I'm in favour of that, but I'm not sure how we can fund that part.
Councillor Macmillan.
Thank you, and I agree, and I think, um, right at the start when we were looking at this, um, strategy, we talked about the, the bike park up in Methvin and, and, you know, this mountain biking in, in Ashburton etcetera and how it was going to connect with the strategy, but they are quite separate, this is getting from A to B. Um, and it's not sort of recreational, so, um, I think we just need to keep that in mind when we're listening to all the submissions and, and recognise that we do need to support some of the groups that are providing the recreational activities as well, but maybe not in the strategy.
Councillor Lovett.
With this running beside a strategy, I'm just wondering in a long-term plan, do we have a contestable fund there that some of these groups can apply for funding for maintenance in the future? Because you don't want them to fall off out of the system, you want to encourage it. Um, and they probably do need a little bit of help for weed control and that, and just whether we should just keep in their minds to create a fund that they can contest and get a bit of help.
Okay, councillor Brown.
Just a question, do we have that now in place or not? I think we are.
Tony.
Tony, please.
Thank you, through the chair, so yes, um, the current funding pot, so to speak, that you have right now, um, your community groups such as a biking committee would be eligible, um, and making an application for that. It's, uh, there are the caps, that's all, in terms of what's actually able to be given out. Um, normally about seven, five to seven thousand dollars is, is the limit. Council in the past has had a sport and recreation strategy and I know Steve was looking to, to get that dusted off and revised and revisited in the, in the not-too-distant future. So that's where a lot of your recreational aspects could fall if they didn't stay in this area.
Councillor Letham.
Uh, thank you, Mr Chairman, just to follow on from what I said and what has just been said. I struggle to find a reason why, for the want of a better word, a private enterprise, how good it may, however good it may be, how can we justify the rate payer suddenly taking it over and, and paying for it?
Um, okay, I'm actually wondering if they're actually asking for the rate payer to actually take the thing over. Uh, I don't think they are. They're asking for help and we have to remember that these submissions actually come from the document Our Place, um, not the actual cycling and walking strategy. Um, I actually think the work that's been done around the district is phenomenal, um, and of great benefit to the district. In fact, I remember Kelvin Holmes, um, promoting, um, around the district one. And it only really held up because of private farmers and, um, an agreement about a stop bank coming down the Ashburton River that actually stopped it. And we'll probably hear later on, uh, when we hear the Methvin Lions about their proposal for walkway and cycleway up that area. So I actually think we need to promote these, um, that's just my personal view. Councillor Rawlinson, uh, sorry, councillor, Mr Mayor.
Thanks, councillor Mackay. Just thinking about those walking tracks through, and cycling tracks through the, um, the river beds and we have a lot of them in, uh, Ashburton here, which are, are great and very well-used. And the people talk about the maintenance of them and it's just, they've all developed them and they've done a great jobs at developing them. It's the maintenance of them. And I think that we, they, we, someone should, could probably use the court-enforced, uh, periodic detention workers for maintaining these tracks. It's not hard work, I think it's cutting some bushes back because they get overgrown and filling in the odd pothole with some shingle. Could we, um, have a look at using the court-enforced workers to do this work? At, at no cost to the, uh, rate payer, but at huge benefit to the users at minimal or no cost. And it is getting some community service back from these people who the, um, courts have decided need to give back to the community.
I'll go to our group manager on that one, who is looking to put user groups together in the future anyway, Steve.
Uh, just through the chair, just to reply to that and some of those previous questions, one thing that we are rolling out in the district are these, um, user groups. So, um, uh, and one of them is regarding the, the, um, Ashburton River Trails. We're trying to get them all around the table together, one to look at opportunities, but also sustainability and funding. So that will roll out. Um, I certainly will look into what the local arrangement is for the, um, periodic detention, um, uh, people here. I'm not sure what the arrangement is, in the past, for the last fourteen years, I've certainly used them and used them a lot. So, um, but I'll, I'll, I'll look into that.
Okay, councillor Halon.
I certainly agree with, um, councillor Letham's, um, sentiments that it is not the role of council to, uh, maintain, um, tracks, which are really only there for a limited number of our residents. I am an avid bike fan myself, using those tracks at least once a week. And to me, the amount of maintenance required on those tracks is very little. One of the service clubs does an excellent job on the Lake Hood track. The MTB club do an excellent job on the first part of the, uh, Wakanui track. But to me, I mean, probably when I retire, I'll probably take the chainsaw or slash it down and do some work myself in order to keep those sort of tracks clear of vegetation. Where you do get some issues is that, um, on the Wakanui track, there was a bit of a washout last year, um, as a flood came through, which has created a bit of damage, um, and that is still not fixed. But cyclists have a very good way of finding their way round little washouts like that and it does not take long. Probably the biggest stuff-up we've had was seat contracting, dumping all of their pebble shingle on the Lake Hood. And when you went roaring down that track and hit that, your bloody knee arsed up very quickly. So I understand that that has been fixed, but pebble shingle hadn't, should never have been put on a cycling track or even any sort of road.
Councillor Rawlinson.
Thank you, and I agree with most of what's been said. Um, I think we probably were all a bit surprised by the amount of submissions around the, the fact of, um, the mountain biking and the rural tracks wanting assistance from council and, and, but there are many, my main point is, there's many other funders. Um, I mean, money doesn't fix it, you've still got to have people, but having sat on the funders forum, there are many sources of funding in our community other than applying to the council funds. We've got, um, Mid South Trust, we've got many service clubs and, and a lot of other funders. So it's something that those groups can keep in mind, come and ask if they want help.
Okay, so we are agreed that the walkways and cycling trails, as they are worked now, is the status quo with maybe, um, some extra bits here and there. We're happy with that? No, yes? Thank you. James, I'll now invite, um, Mr James Reed from the Mountain Bike, um, Ashburton Committee. His submission is on Stella, page sixty-eight. Also, um, uh, Tony has distributed the Mountain Bike Ashburton Club profile. Um, and James has also sent in some slides. Welcome, James.
Thank you.
The floor is yours, sir.
Cool, thank you. Um, yes, so, uh, James from Mountain Bike Ashburton, as mentioned, uh, so probably heard a bit about us this morning, but we're a local group who, uh, build and maintain eleven point five kilometres of off-road track, two point five kilometres of walkway and a skills park along the river, it's shown up there. So mountain bike track, uh, red, walkway and green, skills parks, the orange in the middle of the red. Um, yeah, so these developments are used by a total of fourteen hundred members of the public weekly. Uh, they're suitable for all ages and enjoyable for all ages. Um, and you've got some background information there for a bit more detailed information about us if you wish. Um, so while I'm here today, firstly, we feel the proposed strategy has missed one of the most important aspects of walking and cycling, which is exercising in nature as opposed to urban footpaths and cycle lanes, as the strategy is entirely focused on. Um, unlike other towns in the region, we're very fortunate to have a river and area of bush here in our doorstep in central Ashburton. Um, and our group have identified this feature and utilised the landscape to provide an amazing community asset by the way of walking and cycling tracks. Um, and I sort of heard this morning about not really being sort of the kind of place this strategy is going for. Um, we'd like to use this as an opportunity to be here, um, as we've been trying to find an opportunity for a while. So, uh, that's one of the reasons we've submitted to this. Um, so secondly, we want to make you aware of the current state of our relationship we have as an organisation with council, which has been a source of frustration for the last five or so years. So the Ashburton Hecate River Trail Committee was formed by council around ten years ago. It had a budget annually of twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, from what we were told anyway, I never, never, never seen it in writing. Um, this group had a great relationship with council, um, and it was really good for everyone talking, um, working between groups and working with council for what we could have down there and obviously much-needed financial support. Um, so the group started off with great traction, building the tracks such as Lake Hood Trail and Hecate Tree Trail. Uh, we even won an award that's on display in the open spaces office, but a year or two later, the funds disappeared. Staff change and our groups feel like we can be a bit of a burden to council and struggle to get much support. While our section of the track's in great condition, we're stretched with maintenance every year and other sections of the track which fall under other groups can be in a very poor state for many months of the year. So what we're asking council to do, for a start, while we appreciate the mention and the strategy, it was only mentioned and there were no action points and almost nothing to do with walking and cycling along the bush area. We urge council to once again commit some funding to the maintenance of the network of walking and cycling trails we've created and continue to expand. We also ask that you partner with us and work with us because for many years it's felt like some of your staff have been working against us. We ask that staff who'll be working on this strategy familiarise themselves with our walking and cycling tracks and consult with us on any maps, signage or promotion that's created from it. Um, we also ask that the staff are shown what an asset it is and encouraged to communicate with our group. We would like this partnership to be documented so there is staff come and go, our club's not forgotten like we have been in the past. So some of the reasons we believe you guys should take action. Um, one, the community already thinks you guys fund the track. Uh, many of our cyclists argue the reason for not becoming a member is that they already pay their rates, so they're already funding the bike track. Uh, so they're often surprised to learn that in fact our committee and three hundred members already raised the majority of the funds ourselves. Um, as demonstrated in the other submissions, newspapers and our large following, we believe we have the community's support. Two, we believe the areas we've created and maintained get a lot more use than many of the council open spaces that you already fund. Um, yet our asset with more users is fully dependent on volunteers. Three, we believe the volunteers will burn out and give up if something's not done. The number of walkers and cyclists using our tracks is growing fast, especially following lockdown. Uh, it's not sustainable to expect volunteers to give up so much of their time to keep up with increased usage of a public track. Four, most other councils commit to projects like this. I've travelled a lot of the country and looked at other walking and cycling tracks and surprised to hear their councils are committing a large amount of funding towards this sort of project. Five, while I wouldn't go as far as saying our tracks here are a major attraction, they do draw a lot of visitors, uh, many from the wider Kenyatta region, but also, uh, visitors visiting New Zealand from all around the world. And we've put a significant amount of work into ensuring the tracks are ridable year-round. This alone being a big drawcard for cyclists during winter where their local tracks are too wet. Six, we're creating one of the only areas of native bush in Ashburton with seven thousand plants in the ground and counting. Obviously, tree planting is a pretty big deal these days and something that most councils are hugely financially supportive of at the moment. Seven, we're a cycling group and we have little interest in a walkway, but we're developing one anyway because we feel it's needed. If left unsupported, our priority will always be the cycling track maintenance over the walkway. Eight, we believe partnering with us will offer council the best value for money towards walking and cycling areas. Uh, we've been doing this for ten plus years and we listen to what the locals want and we build what they want and what they're asking for. Our volunteers are skilled and eager to continue for the benefit of the community with your support. So how would we see it working? Um, we acknowledge and appreciate community grants we've received from council in the last few years, but it's simply not enough money to keep us going. We apply for tens of thousands a year for new projects and developments from groups such as Lotteries and will continue to do so, but a lot of those guys prefer to fund new developments, not maintenance. Um, as, as you have previously, we'd like to see council allocate an amount dedicated to the river walking and cycling tracks, not to be limited to or competed with by other groups and grants for different purposes. The model used by most other councils around the country is a line item written into the budget annually. These funds are transferred to organisations like ours to sit, spend as they see fit. And at the end of the financial year, the group reports back to council with how they've spent the money and what they've achieved. These funds are, the funds are then released for the, uh, following year. We ask that you amend the walking and cycling strategy to include a plan to commit funding to the maintenance of our tracks and add an amount to the next financial year budget. What, the amount we suggest is forty thousand dollars annually. This will go towards weed control, weathering enhancements, pruning, native plants, improving wheelchair access, signage, car parking, fencing and making it a more enjoyable area for the whole community. If you're prepared to commit funding, we'd also be interested in taking over maintenance of other areas of the Ashburton Hecate Tree River Trail, which have been in a sorry state for many years now. Uh, if any of you are unfamiliar with the mountain bike local walkway and want to see an experience for yourselves, you're more than welcome to come with us and we can provide any biking equipment necessary. Uh, so finally, I'm guilty of being one of these kids in Ashburton that grow up here saying there's nothing to do. And our club believes that we've gone a long way towards creating something for the community to do for free. Uh, and now we want to make sure it lasts. So we believe this is what the community wants, so, uh, we're asking if you can get behind us.
Okay, James, um, there's a funding issue in there, councillors, um, and I'm wondering if that's more for this afternoon's discussion, but I'll call on group manager, maybe just to, um, enlighten us of what's available at the moment. But also Steve seems to be an offer of a big workforce there to assist. So, um, you might like to comment and how maybe we can move, uh, the issue to the long-term plan. And your plan is put a funding issue.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, I think thank you, I'm not sure whether I'm the workforce or not, but, um.
No, no, he's offering.
Yeah, morning, James. Um, look, just a bit of background, so, um, I have met with James and actually Claire and I rode the trail only after about week two of being here, so had a pretty good understanding of it. And it is a typical trail network right throughout New Zealand, um, which is really based on a strong volunteer base, people like James that are driving behind it, but it's the issue about trying to keep these trails sustainable and that's, um, that's the issue. And also trying to, um, curtail enthusiasm to develop. And also tr- trying to um curtail enthusiasm to develop it more and more without maintaining what they've got right. So, so James has raised some really good points about um going forward. Part of the, go back a bit of the history, um there was some funding put forward for development. I can't sort of see where there was um a standard budget every year, but, but there might have been well before my time. Currently, we um open spaces assists where they can with what budget they've got at times, but nothing is assigned to the River Trail Network. So um but that may be a conversation you may want to have with your long-term plan workshops. Um but moving forward, we're trying to reset up that user group again to try and um get everybody around the table. Um and we have got some ideas for external funding and also um volunteer assistance as well. So early stages, but, but we are trying to work for the betterment of James and his team.
Councillor, Councillor Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, James. Um a lot of questions are asked, answered there, so that's great. Thank you, Steve. But um hey, first of all, really applaud you guys for the work you're doing. Um it's been going, it's been done for years and great. Um we had one or two phone calls when you came into the hot seat. And um yeah, and, and we talked about this mon- money, what came out of council, but Steve said that we don't know where it came from. So it was there, but at least not there.
Hmm.
It's clear as mud. So um y- you talked about a couple of different councils who are funding it. Can you give us a couple of names and the amount of money they get or what they're funding or?
Okay, so Dunedin and Nelson are two examples I can think of, obviously the biggest cities, but it can be scaled down. Nelson, last I checked, was getting around three hundred thousand a year, uh Dunedin eighty thousand directly to the mountain bike club.
And how big is their area? What they, what are they doing with it?
Uh I'd say Dunedin's network, four times bigger than ours, maybe. Nelson, ten times, fifteen times, maybe huge. Yeah. So obviously not asking for the same scaled down version, yeah.
Yeah. Now, thank you for that. That's all I really had to ask, but yeah, w- we, we're just starting something new because we can't really put a straight in, but yeah, with the ideas that Steve brought to you, I think we can go forward. Thank you for your submission.
Yes. Um I have a question to councillor Wilson. I'll go to councillor Wilson first.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Morning, James. Um I've got a little bit of doubt in that why are mountain bike clubs superior to rugby clubs, soccer clubs? I mean, the schoolchildren at high school raise nineteen thousand dollars to make a cycle track round their school grounds. Um they, southern rugby, the Celtic rugby, that all the rugby clubs run their own grounds and without coming to council unless they've got a specific um project. That's my only doubt. I know you're volunteers, but if you've got three hundred members or three hundred people use it, it's a shame that the, the users don't make contributions towards it, seeing it as a community asset. That's, that's my, um, do you feel you're more deserving than other sports clubs or not?
Yeah, I agree with your last point, uh that, you know, we've only got three hundred members, but we believe the pool is about five thousand people that use it. Um and back to my point before, everyone says that they're not a member, we already pay our rates, so why should we become a member? Um in terms of the versus other clubs like the rugby clubs and things, uh we're, we're not building an asset that just hard out mountain bikers are using, the whole community are using this, walkers are using it. It's not people on all flash mountain bikes, you've got people down there on a hundred dollar bike that they've bought from the warehouse and they're coming down there with the kids. It's not a, a club that's focused around uh like professional sport so much um as those other ones are. It's also free to use for the community twenty-four seven. I mean, I suppose rugby clubs are, but you know, you, you haven't got fourteen hundred people a week going out and using those rugby fields for, you know, playing a game of rugby in, in the weekend with some friends, so, sort of as much as ours is used by the whole community. Um I'd probably like to reinforce that it's, yeah, it's not just mountain bikers, it's a whole huge group of people that's um probably people don't even realise unless you're down there and you see the kind of people that are coming past. Uh it's certainly not just a lot of guys that are right into the sport.
Councillor. You're right. Councillor Flan.
Morning, James, and thank you for your excellent submission. You've certainly done your homework. The only question I have is, are you not getting bigger than where you've come from? And should you be getting bigger than where you've come from? I mean, we've got excellent MTB tracks down there, both sides of the river and above the river. Um but is it up to you to worry about planting, wheelchair access and that sort of thing? When you're an MTB, I mean, it's great to have those ideas, but when you're limited for funds to basically the odd grant that you can pick up from any of the um charitable foundations around town or grants from the council and that sort of thing, isn't it a case of perhaps focusing on what you and your members are actually doing activity-wise?
Uh yeah, so we're not particularly expanding. Uh the only sort of developments we've got going on is the walkway and green. As you can see, it sort of only goes halfway along. Uh so that's the only thing that we're really working on. Other than that, we're not really interested on making any more tracks, making it longer, we're only interested in improving it. Um the wheelchair access is for people using adaptive mountain bikes that uh that are paralyzed, say, uh so making bridges bigger, things like that. Um yeah. Or general maintenance like that, the planting, we pay for all the plants. Uh it's actually surprisingly hard to get money for native plants. Um yeah, I guess we're just, council has paid for the maintenance of the plants uh for the last seven years, they still contribute a wee bit from open spaces. So we have a contractor that goes down there, sprays those plants. Um and if I can, just in regards to the uh PD workers and u- using that force to maybe, you know, look after some of the natives and things like that. We lost eight hundred native plants when originally we had PD workers and council staff um helping with the spraying and maintenance. So that's why we're reasonably uh nervous to go down that road again.
Councillor McMillan.
Thank you. My question's been answered. I was just gonna ask um how you funded the planting because you said seven thousand plants. It sounds like a, a huge amount to have to fundraise for or to get grants for, so I think you've just answered that thing.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thanks and um Angus. Um welcome, James, and just got a couple of uh questions. The club membership, do you charge to be a member of the club?
We do.
What's the membership?
Uh so I believe thirty dollars for an individual, twenty dollars for a junior, fifty dollars for a family. That's sort of more for people that are interested in racing, gives us a national affiliation so they can race uh through, throughout the country and obviously a wee bit of money towards maintenance.
Yep. And um some of your members, well, people who use the track who are not members, they say they pay the rate, so why should be a member? And the answer to that is two totally different things. Um but that's uh for them to sort out. We generally use rates here at council for council assets. We spend the rate money on the assets we own. We, and for an asset we don't own, we do, we give grants for people. And that's where um uh possibly some money could come from, it's a grant, because we don't own the land there, we don't own the track. Um so we can't rate, use rate money for it, but grant money could be used for it. The owner of the land is probably ECAN, um because they have the, the land there and they all look after it by the riverbeds. Have you been to them for funding for these tracks on their land?
Uh so the, it's broken down to about sixty percent ECAN land, thirty percent council and ten percent private. Uh ECAN don't, aren't financially supportive, but uh they help us in a lot of other ways. They provide spray, uh they help us mow the track where, where we can get a mower down, um help with the planting. Their staff will come down to planting days, uh and their staff in general are very helpful and supportive. Um yeah, but we probably get more, much, far more than we're, we're um expect from them. So from ECAN's front, we, we think that they're hugely supportive of what we're doing.
Right, that's good. Thank you.
Councillor Rollinson.
Thank you. Thank you for your excellent presentation. We're just saying here we'd like that emailed so we can have another read of it. But my point really to speak was, um we learned recently at a biodiversity meeting that both Sinlay and Fonterra are quite good at giving out plants. So there's another source for you to perhaps um speak with.
Uh we've been declined twice by Fonterra.
I will try Sinlay because they were in the recent biodiversity meeting and heard a story from a group in Methuen. Now the two are connected and they're giving them plants, so that's just another avenue for you.
Sure, thank you.
Great presentation, thank you.
Um just on that, two, two things. One to the ma- Mr. Mayor. Um are we, I heard your words about the grant, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering if we could still move it to um the discussion, seeing it's a funding issue to um.
Yeah, we, we can discuss it long-term.
And on the planting one, um a que- question to councillor Lovett. Is it possible for us to get plants from our sources that we're good with to give to other clubs or is that, or do you have to go straight from the giver to the applicant?
I would, I, if I like get your club actually to talk to Sinlay because Sinlay, um they've got a big news through their developing at um halfway between here and Christchurch, what's it called? Dun Sandal, Dun Sandal, and they've um, they're doing a lot of planting up there themselves. And they, they've said, they told us at her biodiversity meeting that they want to come on board with clubs and things, so I think that's your best bet at the moment is, is talk to, make that connection, talk to them and show them what you're doing and get them down there and um see what you can do there.
Yeah.
But as far as the council goes, um I hope that's stuff.
Steve. Sorry, just through the chair, just a response to that. Um I might just get one of my team in that biodiversity area to make contact with Sinlay in, on behalf of what James is doing to see whether it's um, whether it's feasible for that to occur. Um they may say, no, it's all got to be on their land, on their farming land, I don't know, but I'll get one of my team to make that approach.
So probably for the next few years, we are pretty well covered for natives now. It's been a long process getting um, getting to the stage, so you sort of have to prove that you have a track record. So we're probably more here for, for keeping those natives in place, maintenance, spraying, weed eating. Um now I think we're in a pretty good position to be getting more natives every year. So that's not something that we're um really pushing too much.
Okay. Okay. Happy councillors. Oh, councillor Brown.
Just, just one question. So how, how many K's, James, is the track or are the tracks you're maintaining?
Yep, so uh the red's eleven point five kilometres, green's two point five kilometres.
Okay. So basically it's all the town sites you'll maintain?
Yep.
Correct.
Okay, councillors, um tea, coffee time. And we have Mr. Hard- Harden in the back of the room. So um can we try and be back in ten minutes? Would that be all right? I, I do. Councillors, we've got a quorum. Is Tony, Tony, Tony Durham around? Just before we start, Tony, I'd like to ask you, just to make sure for clarity. Our submitted nine print this morning, Mr Murray Hawkes said that was confirmed, was it? Can you comment?
Uh, thank you.
I just want to make sure that we're not missing out on anyone.
Yes, thank you through the chair. So Mr Hawkes did confirm his speaking slot before Christmas when we contacted submitters, but we haven't heard from him since.
Okay, thank you. Mr David Harden, thank you very much for coming in and making a submission. Councillors, Mr Harden's submission, if you're on Stella, is on page forty-four. And I hand the floor over to David, welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm speaking on a sort of a loose knit group of friends that we bike with around town and want to represent recreational bikers rather than mountain bikers. It's one of the fastest growing tourist sports around. I have biked with friends around North Island, South Island. We visit towns, you know, as well as some of the well-known mountain bike tracks. And I feel that Ashburton has a potential here. I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate the Ashburton Mountain Bike Group for their work on their tracks. But they are in excess of the skills that eighty-year-olds, sixty, seventy, eighty-year-olds have. Going to a town and stopping in a town with our camper van, it is always very hard or normally very hard to find the town tracks. So I would like to take this opportunity to encourage the council to consider extending our current cycle tracks and to provide for a variety of family rides, catering for the many travellers with bikes who are heading to other well-known destinations. To achieve this, better publicity, designated road markings and an enthusiastic and accurate brochure are all needed. These measures might result in many staying a day or two in our district. I'd also like to suggest that in your planning for access tracks, linking the Tinwall Motor Camp and the East Street Motels to define access to the fine Lakewood and Hackett River Trails. Both these trails need maintaining. And I was down to Lakewood the other day and the track is now in good order. The following examples are three possible cycle routes that would showcase our district. And a recognised around-the-town ride has tourist potential, starting from the AE Network Car Park and down through the Green Belt, which I see you've already got marked for a track coming, to the Skills Park. Then along East Street, but go a bit further than you have it, to go over the Historic Overhead Bridge to the Domain and the Museum Art Gallery. Now, may I suggest that a safety island across West Street at that point would be a safety issue that should be addressed. Then you go through the Ashburton Domain, I see that's marked there as dual purpose and up to Belt Road. But continue the cycle way out to Hanran Street and then through Lockley and up that very fine walking track and biking track that goes up through Lockley to the Chinese Settlement. With some good planning in the area of the Chinese Settlement, I think a track could go through there. But you are stuck with not having access to Argyle Park from that point. But I would really suggest that the council apply themselves to that and try to get access up on the true left of the stream. I know it's problematic, but I'm sure that with enough push, it should be resolved. Then through Argyle Park and along Farm Road back to Melrose Road. That could do with some on-road marking, just to direct people. A diversion could be possibly through, we always bike through Coniston Waters. It's such a lovely little ride through there. When you get to the river, there's a very fine directional board there for the mountain bikers. It needs a little bit of an alteration to make it more suitable for recreational bikers. Go down to Mount Ash on the Stock Bank where there are fine views of the town. And here is the only place where I really feel the conflict of codes may develop. But by going through the Dog Park, down to the recycle centre, I think would be a way to alleviate that problem. I always, when I go through, I always feel that those loads of rubbish, of fill that have been dumped along the top of Mount Ash should have been all shoveled up, made a decent mountain out of it so that you could look out over the town and the countryside. When you get down to the recycle centre and look at getting back to the AE Network Coffee Shop, it would need some careful thinking, but by the maps that I have of that area, some of the collection industries that are there seem to extend further than their allocated area. But I'm sure that the council could find ways of getting a walking track across there to the AE Network Centre for coffee. That round trip is approximately ten kilometres and there's only roughly about two kilometres, three at the most, where they would actually be on a public road. To make it worthwhile stopping in a town, you need more than just the one track. And I'm suggesting that Country Ramble would be great, as has been proposed by the Lions some years ago and worked on over the last few years. I see a name now, the South Bank Trail. Starting at Lushington's, bike to the south end of the Ashburton Bridge and then up the current track to the old legal road line of Timaru Track. And unfortunately, it seems that the road line of the Timaru Track has been blocked by farming. But this is clearly identified on maps and the council of the day should not have allowed that to happen. As I hope this council does not allow any public road to be obstructed by farming. You never know when the public may wish to use it. Once on Timaru Track, turn back down the Westfield Mayfield Road to Tinwall, through Tarvotumsho, Buckley's Terrace and back to Lushington's Caff for a well-deserved coffee. That is the important thing of having tracks for tourists or people like us that you end up at a coffee shop. The distance is seventeen kilometres. There's six high country rides that are all on dockland, South Hines, Brosser Odyssey, Lake Clearwater, Lake Emma, South Ashburton, Lake Heron, and they're all on dockland. I will just briefly mention the Mount Brosser, what we call the Mount Brosser Odyssey. And it starts at the Stour River Bridge, up the Ashburton Gorge Road to the historic Hackery Buildings, which is really about where you'd want to stop and have a rest. Turn right into Lake Heron, Shingle Road past Maori Lakes, turn right before Castle Ridge Homestead, and then you're on part of the Tiara Row Trail, which goes past Lake Emly. Following the four-wheel drive, the old four-wheel drive track down the Stour Valley, which is very beautiful and open valley, there's two stream crossings, which, this is an adventure, so stream crossings are part of it. They're not dangerous in any way. As you get behind Mount Summers, it's an easy ride down the beautiful rock-bound Lower Stair and back to the car park. And this could be an outstanding high-country adventure. It's used currently by a few people, but it does need cooperation with Department of Conservation, the council of course, and our Walkway Society, which does the wilding and weeding work in that part of the country. So that's just a suggestion that perhaps you can carry forward in your planning. And I thank you for the opportunity to present.
Thank you, David. Councillors' questions? councillor Brown?
Thank you, David. I know all the tracks, but the last one I never did on a bike. Is it over private land as well? Is it access open all the time at Brosser?
Which one, the Mount Brosser?
Yeah?
No, that's all dock.
It's all dock, all the way through?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The only problem is that there's, well, it's only a problem for maintenance, and that's not a problem with cooperation. There is unfortunately about a three to four hundred metre easement down on Blue Duck Creek at the Lower Stair. But other than, and that's an easement which allows for horse riding, walking and biking. So there's no problem with access any time.
Okay, thank you. And where's the coffee shop there? Where's the coffee shop there?
Mount Summers.
Okay.
The acorns are putting in a very farm around there in Mount Summers.
Mr Mayor?
Thanks, Mr Chairman. Thanks for your submission, David. Good ideas there, nice tracks. Just wondering, who do you think, it'll obviously cost money to develop these up, who do you think should pay for developing them up? Should it be the rate payer or someone else or grants or where do you think it should come from?
Well, I think the town one would come from the rate payer. And it's just, I had a look at your map up here and it would just be perhaps a little rejig of what you're already, you know, must be thinking about. So other than, you know, putting in or having signage and marked, you know, clearly marked where you turn onto this street or this street or into the park or whatever have you, it, you know, it's just a rejig of what you're already doing.
So and for that bit, there would be a brochure required to show you where to go?
Yes, yes. Now, that could maybe finance by sponsorship. Now, if you wanted an idea, you know, if anybody wanted to go and see what I'm talking about, I really got that idea from Tamooka. Tamooka have a very fine, it's been there for years that I didn't know about until two years ago, around the east side of Tamooka. And it links up parks just like I have suggested here. And it's an unknown gem. And if you haven't done it, limp, have a go, it's great. It's not a big ride, but it's...
And Tamooka has a brochure to show you where to go?
Yes, they've actually got on every corner where you turn, they have a map. So that you don't actually have to have the brochure. You look at this map along the street here and then turn itself. I would suggest that around here, road markings would be a big help because if, once it's defined, you know, everybody's clear on where the track is.
And you've included a map of your proposed route here in your submission, which we can see. Thanks.
Okay, councillors, further questions? Councillor Brown?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Argyle Park, now the part of Argyle Park, you can't get there due to the new subdivision. Now, on your track, you know, you go past the creek in Argyle Park.
To get into Argyle Park from Farm Road?
Yes. No, 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 not from the Chinese Settlement, from that side on.
Yeah, well, you know, the maps I've looked at, or the, sorry, not the maps, the surveys that I've looked at, show that you can get from Lockley into the Chinese Settlement.
That's correct.
And then cross the road there, down the road. And I believe that there's been investigations into buying an easement from Farm Road on that bank and a bridge put over into Argyle Park. And it just frustrated the hell out of us that the council, when they allowed the subdivisions on the south side of the creek, didn't allow for you to walkway through into Argyle Park.
I think there was, but something changed. But yeah, those things happen.
That's direct council, you know.
Yeah. But there's an option using Carter's Road up there. You can use Carter's Road, so just the Chinese Settlement. And instead of going to the creek, you just go to the right and it's Carter's Road and then you get back onto Farms Road again. And that's quite a nice ride too.
You can do, but you miss out on best part of Argyle Park. No, I really think, we all really think that it was a neglect on the council's part, you know, when they did the surveys for that new block of houses, that there wasn't access through there. And that's really what prompted me to come along and put it in submission.
Thank you.
Maybe we can talk a group manager into shining a light on that issue. Group manager, floor's yours.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just to answer, David, with your question about that linkage, our staff are currently looking at what are the options to link it into from the Chinese Market Garden Settlement into Argyle Park. So we're looking at that right now, whatever that avenue might be, we're certainly working on that. And further linkages in that area of the town as well, so.
Yeah, well, the other main one that needs attention from the council, we believe, is that an access from the top side of the recycling area through at that top boundary of the industrial area, because it is really not suitable for walkers to go through the bike Skills Park. A, it's confusing and it's a long way down there now before you can get back into, back to the EA Centre.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr Hardon. Thank you for taking the time and effort to explain your views to us. And you've already heard an answer, that one little bit of it's on its way. Hopefully.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. On our call on Mrs Flaville, councillors, the submission is number twenty-seven on Stella. Welcome, Mrs Flaville, I hand the floor over to you.
Kia ora, Mayor Brown, and Kia ora, councillors. Thank you very much, councillor Mackay, for the welcome. I appreciate that Tony is, sorry, Mrs Durham, is handing out the information. I did appreciate the timing of the consultation, as I had just completed my tenth annual walk of the Ashburton and Timmill Township, which means I have walked many of council's two hundred and thirty-three kilometres of footpaths many times over and seen a mixture of both improvements and deterioration of these footpaths over the years. I am speaking to the written submission that you already have. So in regards to areas not included, one amendment is that we've now rolled into 2021. Therefore, it is now thirteen years since the last strategy. And if it's another thirteen years until the next review, that will now take us to 2034. Ashburton Business Estate, Braybrook and Lakewood, all are now established, well-utilised tracks and should be included. I'm sure that elected members, particularly those representing the eastern ward, know better than I of the Hines Village infrastructure shortcomings. It was forty years ago that I frequently stayed with my grandparents in the Hines Township. And regarding footpath, curbin channel, sealing of roads, little has changed in that forty years. Omitting it now from this strategy does little to remedy that Hines often seems to be overlooked. In 2009, both Methven and Requia had their strategic plan delivered. In 2013, Mayfield had its strategic plan. My understanding is that one was drafted for Hines but never completed. On the matter of infrastructure, I trust my written submission was self-explanatory and perhaps the other infrastructure item I should have included was the undergrounding of electricity. Living on a corner section in town, the northern boundary footpath is hot mix and power lines are underground, while the western footpath is still pebbles on tar and we have above-ground power lines. We did have a council contractor visit in March 2020, marking out potholes in the footpath as if they were to fill and provide hot mix finish. Then Covid nineteen shutdown happened and they've never been back. On the matter of public conveniences, ten years of walking the townships makes you acutely aware of public convenience facilities or thereof. Having great walkways and cycleways would be excellent, but the users of those need adequate public convenience facilities. In the absence of a significant walking area on the east side of Ashburton, many pedestrians walk the streets for their exercise. As a business owner on the east side of Ashburton, I often have pedestrians asking to use our facilities as the only public conveniences on the east side of Ashburton are in the centre of town. Would council consider Digby Park as a potential location for public toilets, perhaps at the eastern end of the Silverband Hall? On the map, I did note some inconsistencies and I hope they were self-explanatory. Regarding the proposed shared network, you may have read in today's paper that yesterday I spoke with EA Network's chief executive Roger Sutton. And I know Roger is a keen cyclist himself and we briefly spoke of my attending today and the possible deterrence for cyclists and pedestrians to the north-east industrial park. Many good employers want their staff to be happy, healthy and have multiple options for commuting to and from work, which for EA Networks is at the north-east industrial park. Knowing Roger is a keen cyclist himself, he suggested that the possible deterrence are the speed limits, vehicle movements and infrastructure on Bremner's Road, all noteworthy considerations for cycleways. In closing, I wish to thank you for the opportunity to submit and to speak to the submission today. Thank you very much.
Okay. Councillors, any questions? Councillor Wilson? Something about Hines? No?
Welcome, Donna.
Thank you very much, councillor Wilson.
I will defend the council to a certain extent. Mr Firth has been putting through new footpaths in Hines, so we have had a bit of progress there, so it hasn't been completely forgotten.
Councillor Brown?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Donna, Digby Park, is it the right place for a public toilet? Because I've been thinking the last couple of years of, you know, regarding public toilets on that side, where do you put it? Chalmers Ave's a bit ambitious, though, do you put it somewhere over that side? Or where?
Councillor Brown, I think you've raised a great point. And one thing I did in my written submission was I highlighted that the open spaces strategy talked about having green spaces for all residents of Ashburton within four hundred metres of their home. If we were to do an audit of Ashburton East, I think you would find that there are gaps over that side of town still. And I think you've identified that there aren't large parks for people to walk around. Digby Park is well-utilised. I know that many of the migrants who are coming to Ashburton are playing sport there now. And I, when I do my walk around, am thankful to people who when I knock on the door will allow me to use their toilet. I know that those who are playing sport on Digby Park are going to neighbours as well. It is actually disappointing that there are no parks with public facilities on the east side of Ashburton.
So Digby Park would be the only one you want to suggest or add more?
Presently, I think Digby Park is the largest, most utilised park on the east side of Ashburton, yes. I know that many of the schools open their playgrounds for the children to use, but I don't think it appropriate that the school should be providing toilets.
Thank you, Donna.
Okay, councillors, councillor Rollinson?
Thank you, thank you, Donna, for your submission. Just going back to Digby Park, I've often thought myself that that would be a logical place. So when you see a lot of casual tennis players having hit-ups there on those courts, there's no toilet open at those buildings that are there?
I cannot answer that. I imagine that there is and I imagine that that small building does have toilets, but I've observed that that building only seems to be open and accessible by key when they choose to be playing. So I can't speak on behalf of the Hampstead Tennis Club, I'm sorry.
Thank you, thanks.
Okay, councillors. Donna, thank you very much for coming in to make your submission.
Thank you, councillor Mackay.
Okay. Councillors, I now welcome Catherine Kilgar on Stella, it's page fifty-two. Welcome, Catherine. The floor is yours.
Really, I have come along today to answer your questions of me. I don't have a formal submission to make, other than what I've already written. When we did the consultation on the CBD development, I spent many, many hours putting a presentation together to give to you on that one about the possibilities of good road design and what could be done with that space. I am highly disappointed with what the outcome has been on Cass Street. And I am, as an avid cyclist, one hundred per cent against you changing on-road cycle lanes to shared cycle paths, particularly on Chalmers Ave or any other place that we already have separated cycle lanes. The separated cycle lanes we have at the moment are in the door zone and aren't very encouraging of new cyclists. The separated cycle lanes we have at the moment are in the door zone and aren't very encouraging of new cyclists but to make it a shared footpath, particularly if there's no removal of power poles along those spaces and particularly if you are expecting cyclists to stop and start at every intersection, would be, in my opinion, a massive step backwards in progress in this town. And it would be better not to waste the money than to do something that is worse than what we have now. The cycle space on Cass Street, there are no bike stands, there are plenty of car parks, there are no bike stands. When you cycle along there, and I have done it once on a day where there was no pedestrians, it is a distinctive bump when you go from the footpath shared space onto the road and a bump again to get onto the footpath on the other side. It is not something I desire to repeat again. If I am cycling to the shops to buy my milk and my bread, I want a smooth journey, the same as someone in a car does. You drive along Cass Street because you don't have to give way and you don't have stop signs. I cycle along Cass Street because I don't want to have to deal with give-way signs and stop signs. And I certainly don't want to be forced, because I'm in a shared space, to stop for every single intersection. It is insulting to me. I am not a pedestrian. It is more effort for me to get going again at each intersection on my bike than it is for someone in a car. This is not the standard we should be aiming for. As you can see, I'm rather passionate about cycling, and everyone in my family bar one cycles. I have a husband who cycles out along Seafield Road twice a week on his e-bike. I have sons who cycle out to the airport once a week for cadets in the evening. I cycle myself out to the airport multiple times a month. We really do need to do something for cyclists. Ashburton in a car is flat. It's still relatively flat on a bike, but it is a tourist town, which means you're going to have uphill sections that you notice more on a bike than in a car. It's a small town. If we were to get the residents within five kilometres of the CBD, even doing two trips a week on a bicycle, we would reduce the amount of traffic on our roads, which would reduce the amount of money we are spending on maintenance on our roads. We would reduce the amount of congestion and the amount of pollution. We would increase the happiness level in our town. I'm not talking about eliminating the use of cars. I am talking about reducing the feeling that the only safe way to get around town is on, in a car. In 2019, I spent two terms over at Tinwold School, helping in their voluntary education with children who needed extra help reading. I cycled there pretty much every week that I had to be there. There was another lady there, and every time she saw me walk in with my bicycle, would go, "Oh, yes, my son used to cycle into town, but he got knocked off his bike twice going into town, and so now he never cycles and he drives across the Tinwold Bridge to get to work." That is what we need to stop, the idea that it's not safe on our roads. And if what the council does looks to the general public, like cycling is still secondary to driving and cyclists still have to give way to drivers, then drivers will continue to treat cyclists like we are in their way rather than a legitimate road user. And that message has to come from council, that we are legitimate road users and we are not expected to give way at every intersection where if we were cycling next to the car, we wouldn't have to give way. So I want you to put cycle lanes in, but I don't want that.
Oh, councillor Brown?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Oh, Mr Mayor, Mr Chair.
Mr Chair, thank you.
I'm the old.
Not the mayor.
Catherine, thank you for your submissions, but I'm a biker too. And I'm sitting here like, wow, we're going the right way, but you say we're going the wrong way. First question, this person you talked to in Tinwold, the son has been knocked off the bike twice. Can you tell me where that was?
It was on West Street.
Where on West Street was it going?
They were coming from Tinwold, they were cycling northwards to their work. I believe it would have been before they got to the library on, and they had traffic turning left in front of them. So they were cycling straight through on West Street towards the library on the left-hand side of the road. And traffic turning left in front of them knocked them off their bike twice.
Yeah. That is a cycle lane. There's a line there. I drive it on the bike. But to be honest, quite often I get away from it, just because it's a state highway and it's not wide enough really for all of us. So as an cyclist, I certainly get away from that bit pretty quick. I can get into town, I live in Tinwold, I can get into town quite safe over the bridge. It's a proper pane, it's not wide enough, but it's completely separate. As soon as I'm getting to the Mitre Ten, I try to get away from the main highway.
I agree.
Because it's not wide enough. And those big trucks, certainly they will push me off, and they try it once or twice. So I, as a cyclist, I make the decision to take the next road past the church, and it's really safe now on there. Certain things we can help, certain things we can't. That is the main state highway, so we can't do anything about it. My question to you is something else, and the second question, if I can, is the centre of town, we've just been doing this, and we make it a space to be used by everyone equally. So that's the reason it's going to be 30Ks. We've got shared spaces, shared areas there for everyone. Why do we have to put an extra cycling lane there? Because it's shared spaces. Now, we should be looking after each other in that area for a start, and that's a start.
If you cycle along Cass Street and you don't use the shared cycle lane, then you're going to get drivers annoyed. The lanes are very narrow now for it to be a shed. The traffic lanes are narrow for the sharing of cyclists and cars in that space.
Correct, because that's the reason it's been shared with the footpath, yeah.
The footpath is in front of retail spaces and it's a good width for pedestrians. I don't believe it's a good width for bidirectional cycling and pedestrians. It would be a good space for bidirectional, but not in front of a retail space. The couple of times I've been along Cass Street on my bike, there has been a group of three people both times, and they do exactly what pedestrians do with the wide space. They use the whole wide space. So if you then cycle up behind them, you're the annoying cyclist in their space. And I totally get that. It's a relaxed retail area. Pedestrians want to have the space and they deserve to have the space. The width of the road was actually there to do car parking, pedestrian separate to cyclists. It's unfortunate the way it's ended up. Yeah.
Yeah, we've got two completely different views, and we're both cyclists.
I don't want to go as slow as a pedestrian when I'm cycling, but I'm also not going to go as fast as a car, even a 30K area, because I'm on a heavy bike with a basket at the front for my shopping. I'm going there for a reason. It's not a Sunday cycle for me. I want to get to the shops, do what I'm doing and get home, the same as someone in the car wants to get to the shops, do what they're doing and get home. And having to mingle with pedestrians and walk, basically cycle at a walking pace, isn't why I'm on a bike. If I wanted to do that, I would walk. It's just...
Thank you.
Okay, if I can, Catherine. Oh, sorry. Councillor Macmillan.
Thank you. And this is probably not a question for Catherine, it might be for Brian or Martin. But have we got an idea of what the shared space is going to look like? I'm just going through the booklet. What? What is it going to look like? Are you able to?
I'm sorry, hang on a minute, hang on a minute, sorry. Mr Firth, could you come forth? Come to the microphone so everyone can hear, please, because this could be quite important. Thank you.
What I was saying is basically the whole of the CBD area is classified as shared space. We're dropping the speed limit to 30 kilometres per hour. The idea is to slow vehicles right down so that nobody in particular has the right of way. So pedestrians, come cyclists, come cars are all equal as far as the CBD is concerned. That's the general intent. Yes, the shared space is actually on pedestrian footpath, if you like to call it that. But you can ride your bike on the road. I would suggest that you are on the road, you stay out in the centre of your lane. And if you're going at 15K per hour rather than the 30K per hour, well, that's just too bad to the car behind you. They would have to slow down. Now, admittedly, that behaviour is not prevalent currently in Ashburton. It needs to be in the CBD for it to work the way we intend it to work.
Can we have some signage at the entry areas that clearly state that it's all a shared space so that drivers understand that the cyclists have just as much to be on the road and not feel like we should be using the footpath area?
There's no signage that I'm aware of for that. The only signage that we can put up is to indicate that it's a 30K per hour area.
Councillor Macmillan? Okay. Catherine, the cycle lane on Chalmers Avenue. By the sound of it, you don't like that either. And also, I'm just checking the power poles. I thought they were well gone. Because last time I was down there this morning, I didn't see many power poles in the cycleway.
The power poles are in the cycle lane. I'm just concerned that if you make the footpath a shared space, that is narrowed with power poles. They create natural pinch points each time you go past one. I actually use a cycle lane on Chalmers Ave. It's the, if the people pack closer to the curb, then it can work fine. There are issues about traffic turning, using it as a slip lane, going around the corner. There's issues of gravel on the cycle lane. It's, I would actually prefer to keep it as it is than have to cycle on the footpath.
Okay.
I know you can't keep everyone happy all any at the time, can you? It's not what you want to hear. You want me to say that the shared space would be great, but...
Sorry, it's not what I, I never said it's not what I want to hear. I was asking because there's a cycleway there. If that's the sort of thing you want. What I'm hearing is because of that type of road, you actually want to be on the footpath and you can't be there because of power poles.
I don't want to be on the footpath. I'd like to be next to the footpath, but I'd also like the cycle lane to be a through lane where the drivers are expected to stop for the cyclists as they go across those side roads rather than parallel to the footpath, where you end up with the default of the cyclists having to stop at each intersection. The traffic going along Chalmers Ave doesn't stop at each intersection.
Thank you. Mr Mayor?
Thanks, Mr Chair. Probably not a question for Catherine, but a question for the staff, and it's around cycle parks in the CBD for parking a bike once a cyclist gets there. Have we got any cycle parks in the CBD there now, or are they planned to go in the future?
Mr McCain?
Through the chair, we have got bike stands planned for Tancred, Burnett and E Street. If we need in Cass Street, we're happy to look at that.
It's just at the moment, the only one is on East Street. What style cycle stands are you planning on putting on?
It's, I'll quite explain it. I'll have to show you, I'll have to get the details. Perhaps, Brian, you could explain?
My understanding, I think there's, cycle lanes already been put in on Tancred Street, or cycle stand, should I say, in the shared space area in the centre, where it's widened. I'm pretty certain there's the furniture, the street furniture's already there.
Okay. Councillor Rollinson?
Thank you. Thank you, Catherine. Just could you share your experiences of riding in the cycle lane heading south all the way through Tinwold from the bridge? What's that like?
It wasn't as bad as I thought it would be. I was prepared to write it off as being too dangerous next to the traffic. Because of the median strip, it's really, it wasn't as bad as I thought. I did cycle it regularly, yeah. The alternative is obviously turning left onto Cass's Street and then going along Thompson Street. All the roads along there are fairly wide, but I did actually end up using the cycle lane. More to make sure that drivers actually got used to seeing cyclists using it, to be honest, as anything else. And as a confident cyclist, if I'm not using it, who will be?
That's right. Well, that's why I asked, thank you, because I travel that road a lot and you hardly see anyone in that southbound cycle lane. Just thought I'd ask, thank you.
Okay.
Just one more point on to the biking facilities, bike stand facilities. I do use the one near Paper Plus at the moment. I no longer ride my 10-speed in town because I noticed very early on that there was a lot of gravel on the corners of roads and I didn't feel secure on my 10-speed. The general tyre width of bicycles these days are a lot wider. They look like a mountain bike, but they actually have sticks on them saying that they're not to be used off-road. I do find them difficult to fit in bike stands. And the other thing I noticed is that the frames on my bike is, with your standard chain bike lock, I find them hard to fit. It doesn't go through the front wheel and the frame of the bike and join up. And it can miss by as little as one or two centimetres and make it impossible for me to lock there. The one at Paper Plus, I lock beside it or the back of it. The same for the one at Mitre Ten. The one at Countdown, same design, but for some reason I can fit my bike there. I don't know what the difference is. Yeah, so lots of bike parks would be really useful, but we've got to make sure they actually fit the bigger bikes that we have these days.
Well, Catherine, I think that's a very good point to end on. Can I thank you for coming in? Councillors, all the questions done? Catherine, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you very much.
And especially for that last point on the width of the...
The bike tires, yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
I appreciate being able to come and talk to you and answer your questions.
Okay. I'd like to welcome Ricky Brown. Councillors, Ricky's submission is on page 17 on Stella. Welcome, Mr Brown. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I'm Ricky Brown, and I'm here as president of Bike Methven. And really commenting on recreational cycling in mid-Cannibary. And in particular, I guess, in the proposed strategy, the lack of comment or the lack of inclusion of the Mount Hut Bike Park and Methven Skills Park, which are the two key assets, I suppose, that Bike Methven look after. So really, I guess, I'm here to describe what those assets are, believing that perhaps the council don't really understand what's there. So I'll start with Bike Methven as an incorporated society that was formed in 2008. In the constitution, which I dug out last night, the primary objective is to promote and facilitate biking in the Methven and Mount Hut area. And it's as broad as that and beyond that. There's all sorts of other bullet points. Um, and it's as broad as that, um, beyond that, there's all sorts of other bullet points. Um, there's a committee of seven volunteers and a membership of approximately um two hundred to two twenty, which changes all the time. But it sits around that number. Um, as I said, the focus for Bike Methven as it's evolved has become the Mount Hut Forest Bike Park and the Methven Skills Park. Um, and in the five or so years I've been involved anyway with the club, um, from the Ashburton District Council, there's been, I can list three funding um rounds that we've been successful in achieving. In two thousand and seventeen, there was twenty thousand dollars um granted to Bike Methven to develop beginner and intermediate trails at the Mount Hut Bike Park um after it was logged and we were in a big rebuilding phase. Um, in two thousand and sixteen, there was a six thousand dollar um amount given to us. Uh, we were to winterize and develop um full beginner and intermediate loops, so they all made sense within the park. Um, and currently, uh, there's a five thousand dollar um grant from the Creative Community Scheme, which is currently underway, building a welcome and entry sign slash sculpture um at at the base of the park. Um, so I'm here today really, um, not, I suppose, to directly suggest asking for a lot of money and resources, we sort of get them when we ask for them. Um, it's just that I think the walking and cycling strategy should recognise the Mount Hut Forest Bike Park and Methven Skills Park as significant assets to Mid Canterbury's cycling infrastructure. And maybe the strategy maybe could formally indicate a willingness for council to support and assist with the growth, development and maintenance of those facilities. Um, so to describe what's, what we've got, um, Methven Skills Park firstly is, um, the the goal really is, and it always has been, um, to achieve something as Ashburton's achieved and the Ashburton Mountain Bike Club, um, uh, I think's done a fantastic job in developing that park and it's exactly the sort of thing that we aspire to, I guess. Um, that began as a BMX track about ten years ago and as things have evolved and cycling evolved, um, the skills park type format appears to be what people are after, in particular, obviously, youth and um whatnot. Um, that land is actually owned by the Ashburton District Council that it sits on and I think I said in my written submission, it's, it is um on the Methven map as a little cycle sign. Um, and Bike Methven has a licence to occupy on that land to do its thing. Um, currently, it's looks a bit underdeveloped and that's, um, so there's, these are the shortfalls or the problems we have with it at the moment. And it basically, we need, we're working on funding and probably some volunteer enthusiasm needs to be sustained to keep that up and running. And, um, you know, like, building is one thing, maintaining it's a whole other um ongoing thing to manage. Um, the Mount Hut Forest Bike Park, uh, that's, it's split up into different land ownership um portions, I guess, and but that what we'd call the heart of the park down the bottom is privately owned um these days by Sir Graham Harrison. Um, that's gone through a few ownership changes in the last decade, uh, including a period between two thousand and seventeen and two thousand and nineteen, where Bike Methven owned a one-eleventh share of it. And um along with ten other shareholders who are sort of all um generous donators at the time. Um, Graham came in in two thousand and nineteen and um offered to purchase the whole thing off us but keep the um management agreement that Bike Methven have on the place in place and uh and that stands today and the relationship um stays positive. And um and Graham's intention for that block of land is certainly to keep it as a public place and um and keep developing it. He's actually got a memorandum of understanding formed with Lincoln University now to develop it and he's, um, it's called a living laboratory, which I had to Google, but there is other ones around. There's one over in um Punta Kaike apparently and and so his, the relationship with Lincoln University is to have um people coming out and talk of it and try and figure out how to make the place a sustainable um public access area, helps that can fund itself, it's invo- it ticks environmental boxes and that type of thing. Um, since the forestry, um, that area was forested in two thousand and fifteen, um, there's, there's been a push, I suppose, from the early days, it was a proper downhillous place. So if you're young and crazy and want to go down real steep hills, it was perfect. Um, after it was forested and obviously by that stage, there's a proper club involved, um, it's realised that that's probably not sustainable. So there's been a big push um to develop the park into a whole range of um ability levels, welcoming to a holder of ability level, so green beginner tracks right through to the double blacks and um the really difficult stuff as well. Uh, it consists of about, and so I should say too, that the some, we've got tracks that spread up into the Department of Conservation land. Um, there's also some tracks that, uh, we don't really label, but they're there and we're allowed to be there with a block of land owned by Len Glass across the valley. Um, he's more than happy to, for us to be there without having a formal arrangement in place at this stage anyway. Um, our, also our relationship with Dock is um is positive and um and certainly, like most bike parks, there's illegal trails going on as well, but the local Dock people uh know about them and there's a few well-established ones now and we're currently working on legalising them, I guess, and um trying to tidy the, those parts of it up too. Um, also I suppose the assets of Mount Hut Forest Bike Park, um, is, the heart of the park is privately owned, so um it really is easy for Bike Methven to develop and maintain the tracks without bog down and bureaucracy, I suppose, which, um, as soon as you try and build something new on the Dock estate, you find out how lucky you are to have Graham on board down low. Um, you just sort of go on and get it done, as long as he knows what's going on, he's happy. Um, largely, the um, the heart of the park is all in scrub or pine forest, um, so it's not of native um sort of value and and um and generally, when you cut a new track through a big bit of scrub, you're improving the place, not um not upsetting the environmental impacts or anything like that. Um, um, the Ski Field Road is probably underestimated. It's, I don't think the park could be there at all without the Ski Field Access Road. And um, and that helps, like, it just works for all sorts of reasons. It's great for access, for maintenance, trail building. Um, the roads used a lot by mountain bikers for shuttling, so you drive up and ride down. Um, we do a lot of fundraising by providing those days. Um, and the Ski Field currently pay for it all and um which, where, you know, they look after the thing and it's brilliant. And I don't know whether they'll last forever, but it certainly uh makes the place, very few bike parks have access through them like that. And certainly if we compare ourselves to um Christchurch Adventure Park, for instance, um, you'll get up on a car shuttling up, you'll get up quicker than you will up the air chairlift. Um, it's much faster, miles faster. And so that's underestimated the the road's value. Um, uh, the variable topography and soil types up there make it as good as anywhere you'll find. Um, so we've got a bit of everything, so you can have tracks and all sorts of terrains, some rocky, loose, clay, topsoil, um. You can, you know, you can do whatever you want and it allows for trails to work in all weather conditions, dry, wet, anything you want, we never close. Um. And also, uh, with variable topography, you can, it's not that difficult to have green tracks right through to highly advanced uh trails. Event hosting, um, it's, it works well for that because you can run all the vari- various mountain bike disciplines. And the most recent example I've got is would be two thousand and nineteen, running the Southland Secondary Schools, um, Mountain Bike Champs, which was four hundred and fifty kids over uh three days in three different disciplines, which totaling seven hundred odd entrants, um, along with their parents and teachers that all came into town and booked up all the accommodation and everything else. Um, we're hosting that again this March and twelfth, thirteenth and fourteenth of uh March. Um, and that's become so popular, you know, it's become a real problem for cycling New Zealand because they've got to start, it's too much, we'd fill it up in no time, so we've got to limit numbers. Um, the whole place works very well for e-bikes as well as traditional analog bikes and e-bikes turn up more and more and more all the time. And it changes wee, but you're thinking when you're building climbing trails, because they get up and fast, so you've got to make them suitable. Um, and then, of course, the established and formal relationships we have with the Lizland owners, Department of Conservation and Graham Harrison. There's some challenges, um, weed maintenance, um, road use, consonant is endless. Uh, work to do up there to keep the tracks open and running. Um, and part of the end, that goes with the popularity of the park too. With the car park at the bottom, in the time I've been there, we've had diggers and increased it twice um because to allow for um increased use. Um, volunteer burnout, I wrote here, that's a real thing because it's a pretty small club and um and there's a few of us that do an awful lot. Um, health and safety, of course, mountain biking's not safe, so um inherently, that's something to live with and deal with and that's all part of building tracks properly and uh and making sure, you know, health and safety, protective equipment and everything else is used. Um, land tenure, I'll put down as a challenge, at the moment it's good, but it could change at any time and something we work with. Um, and then other use groups, uh, walkers and runners regularly use the the trails and we don't discourage them, but we will, we point them in the right direction, I guess, and um and there's certainly some uh Graham, Sir Graham Harrison would like us to help identify areas for walkers and runners and we informally have that now, but not labelled and not signed and it's something we're working on. Um, and certainly any climbing tracks we have there could easily be used as, or and are used as a walking and cycling, uh, walking and running trails as well and regularly used by by locals. Um, and of course, the Ski Field's another obvious use group and we have to work with them particularly uh through winter and also at the moment because they're very busy with building chairlifts and whatnot. Um, and and there's a, there's a few other people too, you get the odd hunter in up there, but um we've never had any issues, but um, but you certainly see the odd hunter around, scurping up deer and the like. Um, so that's really me, um, it's, I just, I feel, I certainly feel like that asset is probably the um um for tourism, which I see as mentioned in the strategy a bit. I would call it, I would claim it's probably the number one cycling attraction for tourism in Mid Canterbury. Um, it's off the flat, which, um, I wrote down here on page six, there's a comment about here, Mid Canterbury topography is flat and with that's the exception to the rule. And uh, and it provides something different for residents and uh, in, in a, in a growing sport. Um, growing and strong school participation, um, all of the schools in Mid Canterbury, the two colleges and the intermediate, particularly, uh, more and more students getting up there. Mount Hut College now hires all of our trailers um on Wednesday afternoons and has kids uh shuttling as part of one of the sport options through terms one and four. Um, and its event hosting capability as well is, um, already works very well as a, at national level, it's good and and the topography and soil types, with the right development, make it as good as anywhere in the world. That's me.
Thank you Ricky. Councillors, questions? Councillor Lovett?
Thank you for enlightening us on, on this, these trails.
I actually printed up a whole lot of maps as well, I don't know whether it's appropriate to hand them around to give you some impression of what the place looks like, but yeah.
We know it's out there, but it's, it's, it's good to hear it in the detail. And I just hear that you've got all the schools and other organisations using. Do, do they help contribute to the maintenance or, you know, monetary or anything to help you run the place? Or, or is it just everyone?
No, they do, and um, um, it's all mostly voluntary. We do get trails built, um, um, we pay for them, but that's, uh, the local um division of Drummond and Etheridge actually, um, is called Drummond and Etheridge Track and Trail. Um, and he's, Cam Bissett runs it and he's very good at, he's as good as anyone at building tracks, so we'd pay, it's a commercial thing. Uh, maintenance is all done by volunteers generally. Uh, those other clubs, um, they've donated money to us before and it's, in fact, the Ashburton Mountain Bike Club, um, at the time when the council gave us twenty thousand dollars for track building, they gave us ten thousand back then, so, and it was a significant contribution from them at the time. Um, the other one that I'd listed, but um, the Fat Bastards is the other one and they've just come along in the last uh, um, couple of years and but, and they kind of, they sort of, they're brilliant. They're a bunch of older guys who get up there and um, and get it done and injure themselves a bit and everything else, but uh, but they've got resources as well, so they, they put a call out for some help and they're all there in numbers, yeah, yeah. And um, but mostly on a voluntary basis, yeah, yeah.
Councillor Wilson?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Morning Ricky. Um, I think everybody that's been involved in the establishment is to be congratulated, the Lions Club, everybody, it's a- if you ever, your organisation or anybody up there approached, uh, experienced Mid Canterbury or Mr. Moffat or anybody, because quite often tourism Ashburton or Mid Canterbury is Mount Hut Ski Field to a big extent. Have you ever approached them to say, look, can we piggyback on what you do regarding bringing people to Mount Hut skiing? You could go in the bike track?
Yeah, I haven't personally, um, so I can't, and I don't know of that happening, no, no. I, it is, I'm very aware, I'm conscious and I've even spoken to um James McKenzie, but I said, I don't think there's anywhere else in New Zealand where, because we never close, um, where you can go skiing at the Ski Field and go mountain biking all on the same day in the same place. No, we, Queenstown doesn't do that, um, because they close the park in Queenstown in winter. Um, that's unique, yeah, yeah. And so the, so those opportunities are there, I'm sure you're right, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, councillors. Councillor Retham?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Ricky, thank you for your uh submission. Uh, I note at the last um couple of sentences you've put here, in your opinion, the district council's walking and cycling strategy needs to acknowledge both the Methven Skills Park and the Mount Hut Forest Bike Park and address the opportunities and challenges associated with these facilities. I'm not generating the quality of what's done there. As a councillor sitting here, what argument could I put to my ratepayers for them to support you? Because that's essentially what we sit round this table. It'll be ratepayers' money. What argument can I put to the ratepayers to get them to support you?
Uh, well, the things I've listed, then, um, I think with the Skills Park, uh, the argument's the same as the Ashburton Skills Park, just in, at the other end of the county. Um, but, you know, it's a youth activity and um, and people off the streets and all that sort of thing. Um, Mount Hut Forest Bike Park, I'd suggest, is, um, is, when I, personally, I don't care about tourism much. I work for Midland Seats, we don't deal, I'm not a, I don't own a tourism business or anything like that. Um, I, and I, and I'm involved because I like going cycling up there. And um, what I see is, so, so my enthusiasm for the place is, is for the residents of Mid Canterbury, um, by and large. And um, and so that's why I get really encouraged when I see groups like the Fat Bastards start up, which is all heaps of Ashburton-based, um, guys who, I always suggest, might just be sitting on the couch watching TV and drinking beer otherwise, instead, uh, up on a Saturday morning, um, cycling around the hills, hopefully getting a bit fitter and uh, and getting out and about. So that'd be my, it's a facility for them and, and, and Mid Canterbury. It's certainly off the plains, it's, it's a mountain biking on a mountain. So it's a facility that, that they can't get anywhere else other than Mid Canterbury.
That, that's good, thank you.
Councillor Brown?
Thank you Ricky. My head says, hey, give a go, my body tells me don't eat what I made. I'm getting to the day, so I have to be careful with those, those hills. Um, I know it's a, it's a great facility there, but the trouble is it's, it's on private land for a start. So for council, it's really hard to put rates in that, but there might be other options. But it's, it's getting quite popular, you said that, you've got the fence there as well. Do you charge for that? Do you get any money out of it?
We don't charge anything, so people can, it's the same with the Skills Park, so, and it's, um, yeah, so it's free to use.
Completely free to use.
And so our membership, um, by and large, is, for most people, that would, is just done as a donation. Um, it does mean that the so, the club is a, um, affiliated to Cycling New Zealand and Mountain Bike New Zealand, which is important for liability insurance and, and, and it allows us to be able to run events like the secondary schools event. We have to be affiliated, um, to Cycling New Zealand to do that. Um, and it also allows the members to enter national level events. So some use it for that purpose, uh, but most, ninety percent of our members, I would say, become members as a donation.
Other question if I can, Mr. Chair. Um, so how much money do you need a year just to maintain it? Is there a budget?
Yeah, uh-
Looking with something?
Well, um, I was thinking about that and I, I'm not the treasurer, so I can't bring it up off the top of my head, but I suggest we probably turn over about twenty or thirty, twenty or thirty thousand a year.
Just maybe, so keep the track going.
Yeah, I think so. Um, there's certainly a, a shortfall, something we struggle with, like I said, is maintenance and um, and to be fair, I want to be perfectly honest right now, Mid Cana- uh, Bike Methven has got a bit of money around because of the popularity and- Metcalf has got a bit of money around because of the popularity and, and, you know, when we need, we can, we can drum it up and, and even asking for money from the Ashburton District Council, in the time I've been with Bike Metcalf, through grants, hasn't been an issue. So, I don't, I'm not even sure necessarily how the council helps outside of money, providing money, because it's not always money you need, you need people to do the job as well. So, that's sort of why I was suggesting, well, not directly asking for money or resources, but I do feel like the facility needs to be in the strategy to, to recognise, at the very least, as a stocktake of what Mid Canterbury has.
Councillor, councillor Rollinson, oh, sorry, councillor Rollinson.
Thank you, thank you for educating us, I've seen the beginnings of the tracks and trails on the Mount Hut road, but it's great to hear how the nuts and bolts of how it works, but my question is around the, the need, is the need number of people or dollars which is more important as far as the volunteer numbers or the, the dollars, which would be the bigger issue?
I'm gonna say volunteer numbers, but that's because, asking for money doesn't seem to be too big a trouble, when I think, if we could just put up our membership fees and I think people would still pay them, but, and, and so I'm, I'm never been inclined to think we need to charge people to ride up there either, because you can sort of, with enough volunteers, you don't need any money, you know, you can build tracks for free as well if people get up there with a grubber. So, it doesn't necessarily need, it depends where you want it to go, I guess, yeah, yeah. And maybe, maybe other people that say we just need as much money as you can get, you can do anything with money and, and personally, I probably don't align with that and, maybe I quite like the idea that it's as good as the people who use it make it, so, yeah.
Thank you, and that's why I asked the question, I thought, well, do you need more like the Fat Bastards and that's those people who have reached a point in life where they see me retired or retired, they've got the time to go and put in the efforts with a bit of leadership?
No, that's right, and I think you're right, and they, and it probably takes leadership in the committee to, to drive it, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, Ricky. Councillors, all done, thank you. Thank you, Ricky, and all the best, yeah, well done. Tony, we're on Zoom now, are we?
Yes, we are, councillor McQuaid.
Now, the submission councillors is on page three. There is a different person going to be on Zoom than Chris Abbott, but it is Spokes Canterbury, so.
It is, we just might need five to 10 minutes just to get ourselves organised, so if you'd like a quick drink of water, help yourselves.
Five minute break, councillors. Spokes, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good, well, councillors are all ready? Yes, there are some apologies for tardiness, but that's all right, we'll carry on. Don, welcome, and the floor is yours, sir. I'll just remind councillors that the spokesman's submission is on page three of your Zoom, of your Stella program. Don, welcome, where you go.
Thank you. Firstly, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to make this presentation by the Trennic Communication Linker, saving me a couple of hours of travel and I appreciate the gift of the extra time. The written submission that we made talks about a lot of the sort of specifics in your proposed policy, that could be addressed to make it more measurable and targeted, but I'd like to use this time to sort of take a step back if you like, I can just sort of see how the policy fits in overall with what the councils are doing. Can you everybody hear me all right? Is that all good?
Yep, yep, good.
Good, okay. You guys are all bound by lots of bits of legislation and things like this, but really, if you look back at what councils do, what we really try and do is get sustainable development. So, you know, we always want to develop our, our infrastructure and our groups of people and things like this, and the emphasis these days is on sustainability, so we don't want to have a good life and then sort of leave our place that's not good for our children. So, sustainable development seems to be the big thing. So I've had a bit of a look around at what sort of guidelines we've got for sustainable development, and I stumbled across what, something the United Nations put out in 2015, which are goals for sustainable development, and these are quite lofty, obviously, it comes from a pretty high power, not quite as high as the Ten Commandments, getting up there. And so I just thought, well, if we have a look through and see how sort of cycling and walking strategies fit in with their goals of sustainable development, it sort of gives an idea of how well the council is doing or how, where they maybe should be able to do better. So there are 17 of these goals, that's quite a few of them, but I'm just looking at the ones that, I mean, by, by any cycleways, goal number one is no poverty. But what I've said is that cycleways are not only designed for the rural poverty, but they do play a role in the rock by making transport more affordable. It's commonly cited that the only income costs about $10,000 a year, and it actually just been backed up recently by anyone in revenue who have renewed all the literature and said that the cost you can charge per kilometre for using it, about 82 cents a share, and that's for 14,000 kilometres, that makes the cost $11,480. So just using 10,000 as a rough guide, a person on the middle of the wage, working full-time, earning about $40,000 a year, and it doesn't have much tax to pay because they get a quite a few benefits as well. However, they are using a corner on their income for transport, and it's quite a lot, especially when you've got expensive houses as well. Then you say, okay, you have two hundred car payment, well, that's fine, but probably you need two cars then, and the city commander might be able to ship it around in the first one. Cycling will cost about $1,000 a year, plus a wee bit of extra food that you've got to go and do here. Goal three is good health and wellbeing. Well, the health benefits of cycling are well-to-occupying, for example, people that are regularly cycling to the work, on average, have two sec, two of their sick days where they're out of, so that's actually made the benefit for the employer as well as the employer in. Goal five is gender equality, and I, I think it's a good thing, well, it's in this area, it should have people who are, they're not the same, typically more and more risk averse. A most cited people we know, we have well-designed cycleways, we don't have a woman who uses socks to comply, and it's always getting mad, they don't tend to just go out and do anything, but it's when mothers and children are stuck to use, they didn't know that they, they perceive it as safe. We've actually observed this in Christchurch over the past couple of years with the work that they've been doing up here. So when we do have well-connected cycle paths, we do achieve a measure of gender equality. Goal seven is affordable and clean energy. Cycling infrastructure is used by a range of devices, it's not just bikes, there's normal bikes, there's electric bikes, there's scooters, there's electric scooters, there's tricycles, there's skateboards, there's electric skateboards, and there's mobility scooters, and just about anything else that does not require a driver's licence or have an internal combustion engine. Given our predominance of hydro-generated power, these all use clean energy, and if they replace a motor vehicle, this goal is being achieved. Goal 10 is reduced inequality. Riding a bike is accessible for a lot more people than driving a car. Now, we all say, oh, your cars are there and they're good, but there are a lot of people that can't drive them, for example, children under about age 16. Cycleways should be designed for people to be able to use them between 10 and 80-year-old, basically. So that means that you've got a whole bunch of young people that can actually cycle around that cannot use a car independently. There are good bikes now available for people with a number of different disabilities. Sometimes our cycleways are not designed particularly well for them because they may require a wider bike, but it's nice to be able that they actually have ways that they can get around. Goal 11 is sustainable cities and communities. First of all, cycling infrastructure can move a lot more people on the same area of land than a car-dominated road, the figures are quite, are quite staggering, really, if you have a look at some and say, well, you know, this road space here can move so many cars per hour, but if you did it by cycle or even walking or busing, the numbers that can move goes up quite considerably. So therefore, to make a cycleway and get more people moving by cycle, you'd need a lot less space than you do for roads. There's also a big difference in the community wellbeing that is, comes about for more active transport. There was some research done back in the 1960s that showed that as the traffic on the road outside a house increased, the number of people along the street that their residents actually knew decreased, because people stayed inside more and didn't go out on the street. So that's a big thing, that's just the social cohesion thing. Responsible consumption and production. So basically, what we're saying here is, you know, is to consume less of our carbon sort of things, and cycling certainly uses a lot less carbon than car transport. Climate action, transport is one of the areas we can have the most influence at a personal level, if people decided themselves to say, okay, I've got an option now, I can use my bike instead of my car, then that does lead to better choices. And goal 17 is partnership for the goals, so it means that we can't achieve them all by ourselves. So councils need to provide the cycle paths that are designed by professionals, constructed by private enterprise, and endorsed by advocacy groups. Individuals will then make choices to use the cycle paths using bikes that have been sourced over long supply chains. Employers will reap the benefit of a healthier workforce, so take steps to encourage the use of bikes. Central government will see the benefits for public health, so contribute towards the cost, and this seems like a pretty good partnership to me. So that makes nine of the 17 goals met in, in some part, I think this is quite a good effort. So councils can make these things possible and lead the way. There's another goal that sort of we almost achieve, which is quality education, and most of this is provided by parents and teachers, but cycling and walking have a part to play. Education is, educators often talk about how easy it is to teach after the pupils have exercised. The walk or ride to school provides us opportunity much more than a ride in a car whilst engaged with an electronic device. So, so the last point that I wanted to make about this is that the council, your council, like most councils, will be spending considerable resources on road construction and maintenance, and these are important because they're needed for economic performance and do help people move around, but they don't meet a lot of these other goals, so therefore I sort of thought that you should be saying, well, a part of our transport budget has to be sort of earmarked for these other types of transport, as opposed to just thinking about cars all the time. So that's sort of the gist of my oral presentation, so if anybody's got any questions about that or the written one, I'd be pleased to answer them. that or the written one, I would be pleased to answer them.
Councillors' questions for Don. Who's first? Please don't rush me.
Thank you.
councillor McMillan, deputy mayor.
Hi, Don. How are you? Just reading your written submission, and you've talked about, I live up in Methfin, and you've talked about children biking to school. There's not a lot of kids that bike to school in Methfin. I don't know why. Most of them either come by bus, but the ones that do go either walk or they scooter. And there's been a lot more children scootering since we opened our new skate park up there. So that's great to see. There's lots of kids out and about. But you've just written in here about your shared space, either a shared footpath or having a separate cycle lane. And I just wondered, from your experience, what do you think works best, especially in small towns?
So I'm sorry, the audio wasn't very clear there. Just if I can just recap. So what you're saying is, what do I think works best in terms of a shared path or a separate cycle path? And by that, I presume you mean something painted on the road? Is that right?
Yes, yep. Can you hear me now? Yeah, yes, please.
Sorry?
Yes, that's what I'd like to know. What your opinion is in a small town, what would work better?
Well, it depends on what people really are happy with. And that's why I've alluded to that work that I did in Cambridge. So you're saying that not many people bike to school in Methfin. And they're out taking scooters, and that's fine. That's just as good. Independent scooters, probably something that children could do at a younger age, and maybe independent cycling. So it's a walking and cycling strategy, but that includes all those other forms of transport as well, like the scooters. So if you really want to find out why the children are not cycling or scooting or walking to school, then I think that you've really got to go down that path that they went down in Cambridge and put it out to the parents then and say, what's the problem? And they might say, look, it's a trouble getting across this road. We just can't get our children across this road safely. And if that's the case, well, okay, you've got to address that. But it's pretty hard for a council to try and second guess them and say, oh, if we just put it a little bit here, it may be adequate. It's much better to go back to the people that are making the decisions and say, right, let's come up with ideas and tell us why, what we need to do, and where we can actually spend our dollars.
Fair enough. Councillors? Don, can I thank you for your comments? And thank you for making the effort to present to us with your views of the not-quite commandments, but almost there. So thank you for that. And all the best. And we'll be making decisions this afternoon, and your views will be included in that. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right.
I now call on Mr Price, who represents Ashburton Citizens Association. And councillors, the submission on Stella is number, page sixty-six. Mr Price, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to our submission. As councillor MacKay has noted, I am speaking on behalf of the Ashburton Citizens Association. And the views in our submission are the views of those members who were present at the November meeting. Our submission is not going to be as lofty as the previous one, but there are many things that we actually totally agree on. And that last point about, excuse me, about one of the things that put people off cycling in particular is the inability to safely cross major roads. And part of our submission talks about crossing points on State Highway One. Now, obviously, I'm aware that State Highway One comes under NZTA control, but I think it's really important that we deal with two of those really, really difficult crossing points. One is by Mieter Ten, by the skate park there. And because it is a skate park, there is a large number of children crossing at that point, often on skates or other non-motorized vehicles. And the other one is at the end of the railway crossing, pedestrian crossing bridge. Getting from the bottom of that bridge to the domain, the museum, the art gallery, is a case of taking your life in your hands and often having to run across there. There is no footpath, there's no crossing point, there is nothing to help people manoeuvre that at all. On the other side, on the east street side, there's pedestrian crossing, there's footpath and all sorts. So that kind of inequality, inequity in terms of access needs addressing. Some time ago, a number of us tried out mobility scooters and trying to get across State Highway One and onto that bridge really was dangerous. And those of you who attempted that will probably back me up. Our submission was written in the context of having experienced lockdown for several weeks and understanding that a lot more people were actually walking and cycling. And I guess the theme to the submission is those obstacles that stop people from doing that. I think we can all agree with the previous speaker that it's a good thing for people to be out exercising. It's a good thing for people to be off the road, out of motorized vehicles, on so many different levels. But we need to alleviate the obstacles. And I assume that you have all read our submission. That's the theme of the submission, is those obstacles that stop people from walking and cycling, and particularly the older people in our community, many of whom are members of our, well, some of whom rather are members of our Citizens Association. So I will not carry on talking any longer. I'll just leave it there for questions, if there are any.
Thank you. Councillors' questions? Councillor Rawlinson?
No question. Thank you, Selwyn. Just regarding the access from the overbridge to the domain. I mean, I was one who went across there on a mobility scooter and it ain't nice, that's for sure. How would you see that as perhaps being able to be improved?
If you think about the crossing outside Cleaver's Corner, there is actually a median island there. If I remember rightly, it may or may not have a bar for people to hold on to. I think that kind of structure needs to be put in place there. So there's actually a clear way to cross. You've also got the problem that it actually is opposite, I can't remember which road it is, World Street, is it Park, World Street? It's actually directly opposite that as well. So you can't make a straight crossing either, because you end up in the middle of another road. But I think a median island would be the way to go.
Can I ask supplementary? Can I ask Mr Firth? I know we've talked about this before, but would there ever be a chance of persuading NZTA to allow a piece in the middle, a safe island, to be put in there, Brian?
My understanding is that Winchester has one. So I can't see why decent bit of lobbying of council to NZTA shouldn't have an effect. Okay. It's exactly the same situation in Rekia. I'm not sure why the council actually took on the overhead bridge, but currently I wouldn't like to take a mobility scooter over that bridge, full stop.
I have ridden one across it and it's quite easy, but getting off it at the west street end, if you're in a large mobility scooter, is a bit tight. But perhaps our road safety committee could start the ball rolling at some point by starting a process to lobby NZTA. Thank you. Thank you, Selwyn.
If I can ask you a question, councillor Rawlinson. Would it not be better if we actually got NZTA to come and see this council? Because we've all got a number of questions, have we not?
We could, but we've had a good outcome recently by having them at the road safety meeting. They're always there and we managed to get the new lights on the bridge. And that was something we'd been battling for for a long time. So yes, the contact again could be worthwhile.
Okay, councillors. Councillor Furlan?
Yeah, thank you for your submission. Well, we've got Mr Firth here. I have got some sympathy for these low-profile curbs, not only just...
Maybe that's this afternoon one.
No, 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 no. What I'm wanting to know is, nothing to do with cost or anything like that. But is it policy that we have these undulating curbs or low-profile curbs or whatever, or are we going back to having the guttering and so you've got a level footpath?
I'm unsure what you mean by undulating curbs. We have a different profile for various situations. We have a profile for mountable curbs, which is a cut-down version of your normal curb and channel profile. We have the curb and channel profile, and they're the two profiles that basically we use throughout the district. Obviously, there's a lot of older style infrastructure still out there. It includes the bridges that are over the deep dish channels, things of that nature, where we do upgrade the infrastructure. We're putting in the standard curb and channel or the mountable curb and channel. And each of those has a cut-down type design to allow for pedestrian mobility crossings. The difficulty we have in some places, like in the CBD area, is the current floor level of the various buildings. It's trying to marry everything together so that we have the necessary crossfall across the road, not too steep a footpath, but still manage to get the crossings in in places. So it is a bit of a catch-22, especially in the CBD type area.
Councillor Wilson?
Thanks, Mr Chairman. Morning, this afternoon, not in the hours, Selwyn.
Good afternoon.
I see your comment about obstacles of wheelchairs and mobility scooters. I think if you had a look at our new setup in the CBD, I think we've really taken into account that that is really important.
Yes, and obviously I was part of that group that helped plan that CBD rehabilitation. I think it works very well, but it's only a very, very small part of the town, unfortunately. And as noted in our submission, there are still a lot of the old-style footpaths that are chipped and bitumen. There are still poles. On bin collection day, we have wheelie bins to negotiate around. And going back to the issue with the curb, that point was made by an eighty-something-year-old member of the group. And if you actually have the berm on the roadside of the footpath, that alleviates a lot of that undulation because the run-up is less marked at the property side. So yes, there are still a lot of obstacles, but the CBD is definitely a very good example of how it could be done.
Councillor Lovett?
I'm just going to go back to the overbridge. Is there issues with that bridge coming off it before you even cross the main highway? We've just heard a few comments about coming down it, because it's bounding on the motorway and...
There is very little space in between the curb at the edge of the State Highway One and the actual bottom of the bridge. It's not sealed at all. There is a bar to stop people, I guess to catch themselves as they come off the end of it. But that is all there is for pedestrians or anybody on anything else. If you're in a mobility scooter and you probably came down that too fast, you'd probably take your head off, I would imagine, on that bar. I think it needs a lot more of a landing strip, if you like.
Right. Landing strip. Okay. Councillors? Thank you, Mr Price, for making the submission on behalf of the association. Mr McLaughlin, Metford Community Board, are you ready to go? Okay, we'll have you early, if that's all right. Welcome, Mr Chairman.
Good afternoon, everybody. The mayor, chair, and councillors and staff. Happy New Year to everyone.
Oh, hang on, sorry. I forgot to announce that the community board submission is on page fifty-eight for those with Stella. Sorry there.
Thank you. No problem. So we put a submission and I started working on a PowerPoint presentation. And here we are, the twentieth of January, and it's not finished. So here I am. So I'll spare that. So by the time I'm finished, we'll be even more ahead of schedule, I would say. So I want to go through a few points and just clarify some of the stuff on our submission. First one is the footpaths on one side of every street. I reckon that's really great. Methfin Community Board has been working on that for the last few years. It was stopped in the district, no new footpaths. And the last few years, managed to get a few more in, and we appreciate that. So we've sent our wish list through to staff about what order we would like the footpath put in, and they were putting that into the LTP. When you look at it, when they put them in, it's over a ten-year period. So we don't want, there's not that many more footpaths to go to get one side of the street, but ten years is still a very long time. Obviously, that comes down to funding. How do you fund it to speed that process up? But we would like that process, like to see that sped up. So we could get a footpath down each side of the street. The other one on that, I did get a comment back from staff saying, one of the footpaths we're after, there's not a lot of houses here, there's not much point. Footpaths aren't really about just in front of the house. It's about people using them to get around the district. And the footpath was to serve and navigate the actual Methfin urban area, link it all up so people could actually walk right around the town. So I think that needs to be taken into account that footpaths are for everybody to walk. It's the one that goes around past the dog park too. So people access the dog park. And so that didn't even look like that was going to get into the ten-year plan. We haven't seen the update yet, but that's one we'd like to sort of push forward for a bit. The next one is about streetlights. We've brought this up a couple of times about streetlights missing in Methfin. It's just been new subdivisions have been allowed, and no one's really noticed, no one in planning has noticed it. There's a gap between where the old subdivision was and where the new subdivision starts. So we've got a couple of areas in Methfin, and we've been advised that that can only be done in LTP because it's got to be funded for. And hopefully that gets put in the LTP. But we're very pleased to see that's part of this document. And you're going to do it district-wide, which would be really good. It's just something that's probably happened over twenty years without anyone knowing. And all of a sudden, there's some gaps. The next one is the map of the walkways around Methfin. So it shows it as existing trails sort of around the golf club. And what there actually is there is a road. There is no existing trail. So about, I think about twenty-five years ago, a group started up, Methfin Walkway. They produced a map and said, you can walk this way. And that's about how it was. And they did do part of it through trees as a licensed occupier. It was going pretty well, but obviously they had volunteer burnout and then people sensed it's strange. So people have been just walking around that and walking on the road. We'd like to see that progressed. And the community board has been working on this for quite some time. About ten years ago, we had a bit of a crack at getting that started again. It ended up not getting a lot of community buy-in from, unfortunately, it was from council staff's attitude. And from that attitude, I decided to get involved in local politics and here I am eleven years later. So I've got him to blame for that. But so now there's a lot more people walking and the new groups looking at doing that. I think Mr Gard might talk about it after me. So we'd like to see that progressed. And the idea is more community buy-in already, you know, ten years later. There's a lot more community buy-in and people would really like to see that. Uh, there's a lot more community buy-in and people would really like to see that progressed. Uh, just on my last point was the Mount Hut Forest Park, uh, and the Skills Park in Methan. I understand that thirteen years ago, this, a document was done on walking and cycling strategy and it included just Ashburton. Thirteen years later, you're doing this and it's including a lot more of the district. So staff and councillors should be congratulated on that, that we are all part of the district, not just Ashburton. So it's good to see that. And I see you've had a lot of submitters this morning on the mountain bike parks and, uh, about trying to be recognised in this document. And I hear from the councillors that it was an urban type of thing, joining A and B together, which I understand. But from the bike park's point of view, I'm guessing what they're after is some recognition in the document that cycling or mountain biking on these trails is really important to the district. Uh, if you talk about the river trails and the Mount Hut Bike Park, the amount of people from this district using them, let alone out of the district, is phenomenal. If you had that amount of people using the actual urban ones on the road, you'd, you'd be, it'd be amazing. And I understand, I mean, the urban ones are good for the people that use it. Not many people use them. Uh, but it is good for the ones that, and they probably appreciate that because it is hell out there on a road bike amongst traffic. Uh, and, and a lot of people will be like me, have given up road biking and gone to mountain biking because the cars don't hit you as much. I fall off just as much, but, uh, the cars don't hit you. Uh, so, uh, from what I understand, it's not necessarily that after the money to, from this document, it's more recognition. I know the Mount Hut Bike Park, or Bike Methan and the River Trail has been supported well through the, uh, the grants thing over the years and they've had quite a bit of money and they're happy with that and I presume that should still carry on. It's more so getting in here and having some recognition. So when they go to other funders looking for grant money, they can say, well, at least our council believes in what we're doing. So if, if it's not in this document or something there, they don't have something to go out to these other funders and go, well, you know, our council's not even on board. Where, where the council is, it's just getting it documented. All right. So that's probably the end of my waffle. Any questions?
Yeah, okay, um, yeah, I, I have one, Dan, if that's all right. Now, a few years ago, um, on Alfred Forest Drive, the volunteers of the Methan Community Board started to put in a track. Um, it's shingle, is that right? But, um, you know, the peak gravel, was that right?
Yes, it's, uh, peak gravel and it doesn't have a border.
Can you on the metro, say how far it goes now, please?
I'll get up.
Yeah, good.
So it basically starts here and red, red, white, a bit there, right over there. So this is the new subdivision that's coming through, so it's just that, it's there.
Right, okay. Um, is there a plan to extend that any further with those volunteers or have they worn themselves out?
Uh, those volunteers, one's left town and one's sort of burnt out. I, I think Mr Gard, when he comes along, he'll talk about the Lions' vision of extending that. The Mount Harding Walkway, which is the one that goes up and sort of around, which was the old walkway, has, a lot of work's been done on that in the last, uh, quite a few years and the Methan Community Board's been behind that and done quite a bit on that. So it is linking all that track up, so, yeah.
Um, councillor McMillan.
Thank you. And, um, councillor Mackay stole my first question, but my second question, that's all right. Um, my second question, you actually skipped it, is about the refuge on Main Street. Um, and I'm just wondering, I see what you mean where it's really busy, there's lots of driveways, but do you think there could be one along that stretch, um, of Main Street? Because, and just to, um, let the other councillors know what I'm talking about. So, um, for children to get to school, um, they need to cross the main road, um, if they live on the other side of the town, which most people do. Um, and there's a, a little pathway through the park that goes to the back of the primary school, which, um, was put in by the Community Board and Council, um, quite a few years ago. Um, now that the skate park's there and children are coming, they have to come across the main road to go to the toilet. Um, and then also obviously to get to the high school. So personally, I think a refuge would be a great idea. I just don't know where. And I was just wondering if you had any ideas if that wasn't the best spot.
Yes, thank you, councillor McMillan. Uh, thanks, thanks to you picking up that I overskip that one. So the board is not unanimous on if we need an island or not. Some people are very against it, uh, some people are very for it. Uh, I think it comes down to, we probably need a road engineer to have a look at it and say what can be done, what can't be done. I think it's simple as that. It's, it looks, so many streets come onto it and, uh, the road out from the bottle store is quite busy because apparently you drink a bit of methan. Uh, so you've got all that traffic and just where you put it, if you sort of look and say, oh, just put it there, someone's gonna have issues with it. So it needs a road engineer to give us some advice, really.
Councillor Wilson and Rawlinson, would you allow the deputy mayor to have a supplementary on that? She turned off too soon.
Yeah, I did. Sorry, not so much a supplementary. Um, but I, I'm wondering if this could, because it's obviously an NZTA road, um, go to, um, one of our road safety meetings, um, and talk to NZTA about it. And, and maybe, I mean, I've talked to them for years about this and, and they have said that they want evidence of where, of what's happening before they do anything. So, um, they wanted to see photos of kids crossing the road and videos and time lapses and all that, which just seems to be a, a, a lot of work. Um, but maybe going through road safety might be, be best option.
Yeah, uh, yeah, it, it could be a good way of progressing it. Uh, it's funny that NZTA wants us to provide the evidence. I'm pretty sure that's their job to provide, to do that work on the, on a state highway, uh, when it runs through the middle of a town. So that's a bit bewildering for a start. Yeah, I think it would be a good way of doing it. We, as a community board and the rest of us could talk about it for, we have been talking about it for a few years. We can't make any decisions. We don't know if it's possible. They might look at it and go, no, not possible. It's just not enough room there. There you go.
Councillor Wilson.
Thanks, Mr Chairman. Afternoon, Dan. Could you show me Mackey Street, Dorma Street, Hobbs Road, Lion Road, where you're proposing to extend the footpaths, please?
So Mackey Street's actually in here, uh, the back of the hall. So this is where our number one thing was around there, behind the hall, just on one side of the road, that was the first one. The second one is the extension of Barker's Road. Uh, the council's got that in the, this year's plan anyway. The third one was, there's a, there's a footpath that goes down here, but there's houses that go right up to the corner. So it's just extending that. And the fourth one is the footpath runs out halfway down the road. So we'd like to see that extended to the end of the road, which would be the dog park. And then eventually right around here, so that way people could walk right around the whole town on, on some sort of surface and be off the road. This is where the new dog park is and a lot of people come this way or that way with their dog if they're walking on a leash, obviously. So it'd be good to have that.
Supplementary? You're right, Stuart. Supplementary? No, no. Uh, councillor Rawlinson.
Thank you. Thanks, Dan, for your presentation. Just going back to the, um, the refuse island. I see some, uh, quite a few other submissions mentioned. Some are in favour, some are not. Um, having been at summer school and been out on that road doing photography, I was amazed how much traffic was on that main road on the sixth and seventh of January and school wasn't even back. Um, but it makes me think, would it be better to bring it down a little bit, maybe opposite the library or somewhere in that area? Take it away from, because the kids could still access it to the skate park, but, um, it's just a thought.
Yeah, there's a, actually where the library is, there is a pedestrian crossing there. Uh, we definitely know that down in the centre of town, we cannot get a pedestrian crossing. That's why we were, uh, Liz is pushing for a refuge island in the middle.
Why, why can't you get a pedestrian crossing in town?
Uh, there was a reason for it. Liz's just said no, I think. Brian might be able to...
Never give up.
Yeah.
Councillor Lovett.
Just adding to that, I'd say never give up either. At, um, road safety meeting, NZTA told us that you've really got to start pushing. It's a small town because we've been trying to get one out at Refuge Centre, out at Rekha for, for years. And they told us that we need to get the media on board and start, um, putting in near misses and getting, getting the, the facts there before they'll do something. We have been trying. It's on deaf ears, you know, it's all to do with your funding and, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, it would be nice to have it in Methan, but I, I really feel for Rekha with their, their main road going through there. And I know they've been fighting that for years and it must be hard. It's, it, it, that needs to be done well before Methan's won. Everyone would probably agree on that.
Okay, councillors. Dan, thank you very much, uh, for making your presentation on behalf of the Methan Community Board. Um, feel free to wait to hear what the other Methan people feel if you've got the time.
No problem. Thanks very much. Thanks, councillors.
Councillor Wilson.
I've got a question while we're waiting, while we're waiting.
Order, please. Order, please. Councillor Wilson.
These maps, Methan and Rekha are excellent. They've got blue footpaths put in. Why is Ashburton-Tinwall not the same? There's no such map that shows existing footpaths on the map. You, Tony, if you just flick through down a little bit, it gives us an idea of what's footpath, especially in Tinwall, you'll see the gaps.
That's done there.
See, they haven't coloured the blue in at all.
Um, sure thing, we can get design to have a look at that and to be able to show the blue on the maps. I'll just double-check if Martin has anything available in his system. But, so these are what the graphic designers produced for us so we could go out to the community and easily communicate.
So the reason why that, uh, Ashburton-Tinwall hasn't got the existing footpath in there is since, if we were to put it up there, it would make the whole map really complicated and it would be too much colour. That's why we just, uh, since the majority of our township has already got footpaths, so it's kind of a, uh, yeah.
Sup, sup, councillor Wilson, you need a supplementary on that. You put the, the footpaths on the west side of the main road in Tinwall, you would see about three lines, four lines. You've got Malcolm Street and those few that feed onto Malcolm Street, a little bit on the end of Towebot and the road and that's it.
Yeah, councillor Wilson, could you do me a favour? Could you hop up and put that out on the map, please, so we all know exactly what you're talking about?
Footpath from about, on here. Footpath there, footpath there, footpath there. None up there, there, no, the footpath comes down here. There's nothing down here, nothing down here. Compared to what even Methan and Rekha, they've got quite a big network. We listen to Mr Lowe, we'll see what he's talking about, stay.
Great manager, McCann.
Um, we can see if we can provide that for you this afternoon for your deliberation. We'll try and get, get a, a map showing that, if you want.
Is that what you want, councillor Wilson?
Well, how hard would it be, Ashburton? You go flick a little bit, Tony, to... Even East Ashburton. See, they want one down to the Christian school. It would be interesting to see where existing footpaths go and where they want the extensions.
We, we can see if we can produce something to help you this afternoon. Yep.
Tony? No? Okay, councillors, um, I presume that we revert back because we've got, we've got about nine minutes, eight minutes. We go back to page twenty-five of this white document that we've been slowly working through. And we come up to the Ashburton Town Centre improvements. And does anyone wish to say anything? We've just about got that covered, have we not? We've come up a number of times this morning about the pedestrian, bike and car friendly thirty-k zone. Um, quite happy that we do that. Okay, we go to the cycle lanes. Yes, councillor Rawlinson.
So just going back to the town centre, to, town centre to be walking only, I read that submission, but that wouldn't work. Not quite practical. The bottom one of the three there, town centre to be walking only, no traffic other than service vehicles. That won't work.
Okay. Right, um, the cycle lanes by five. I thought we'd covered that a fair bit in, um, Mr Howden's submission. Even though this is not submissions. Road qua, road quality, um, councillor Wilson's on about that all the time. Councillor Wilson.
I, I've got a question for, a pity we didn't ask the biking enthusiasts. Councillor Brown might be able to help me. A lot of cyclists in this district cycle on rural roads. How dangerous is it? Because a lot of them are not that wide. Do they, if they've got a coloured vest, is it reasonably safe or?
Councillor Brown.
To be quite honest, um, I was amazed when I started biking on, on rural roads, um, how, how safe it was, up to my place and, and further as well. I've seen, I've seen, uh, people living about one or two k's up the road who bike with their children on rural road. Um, and the most trouble we've got is little shippers of, you know, cars, or excuse my French. It's, it's, it's the little cars, the trucks really go around us. Now, it's, it's, I'm almost safer outside of town than on West Street. It sounds silly. I was not expecting that.
Councillor Philun.
Yeah, just backing up what councillor Brown, uh, find biking on rural roads extremely safe. And normally when cars go by you, they go right over as far as they can because they think you're dangerous rather than them are dangerous. So, as I say, no issues at all with rural roads.
Okay, anyone else on that topic? Oh, well, thank you, councillors. Um, Mr Gard, would you be able to come early or?
Yeah.
Good, um, please come up. Um, Tony Durham will show you what to do. Bring Mac with you. Um, councillors, I wish to declare that I am a member of the Methan Lions Club and there are other Lions and Rotary people in the room, so I don't think I need to stand to one side. That's why I declared I was quite safe. Okay, now, Mr Gard, um, you represent the Methan Lions Club who have a subcommittee or something, is that? Would you like to pull yourself up to the microphone because we're actually live and you're being livestreamed out. And there'll be a red button you can push there on your microphone somewhere.
Yep, there you go.
Now, while they're getting the photographs, those photographs you sent me, um, have been passed on and are coming up. Um, do you wish to proceed or are you waiting on some?
I'm waiting on Mac to put the, um, to put up the whole strategic plan and everything. Uh, thank you very much for, um, letting us come today. Um, yes, to put, uh, put you in the picture, this is a, a Methan Lions project. Overall, um, what we have done is we have set up a, a subcommittee within, within the, the Methan Lions to, uh, drive the Methan Walkway, uh, because a, it started out, if you go back in time, the original Methan Walkway was set up in the late sixties, early seventies, um, by what was then, uh, a Lions Club committee. So it's sort of come the full circle. It was then taken over by Doc, who at that point in time was starting to do walkways and seeing the, the benefits of, of, um, of walkways and cycle ways and things, more so, uh, walkways. They ran it for five years. They put up the original styles and what, what was the original... They ran it for five years. They put up the original styles and what, what was the original Methuen Walkway. After five years, they saw apparently there was, there was no, uh, educational value in the one that we had in Methuen. So they passed it on to the council. Uh, the council at the time looked after it for about another five years. And the enthusiasm for that disappeared. And George Curry, uh, did the maintenance on it for probably about ten or fifteen years. But as his age, uh, got older, he's sort of lost interest or couldn't do it. So it's come, basically the, the walkway's come the full circle. So Ron Smith, uh, started about three years ago doing the one up behind the racecourse. And we've taken it on as a full-blown project, so if you start the ball rolling, Mac.
Okay.
Is that me on air? Yes, it is. Good morning. Thanks for having us along. Um, I've got a wee presentation here which has got the, the guts of, of what we're trying to do. And then there's quite a lot of numbers at the end about, um, what we've achieved financially and what we, what we need to achieve financially. So, um, I'll throw those at you and I can leave a copy of the presentation behind if that's helpful. So without further ado, what, what we're setting out to do, as, as Gardi said, is to complete this, the, the, the walkway, which has been, um, underway in one form or another for about the last forty years. So, um, we think it's, it's full time that it was, it was actually done. So it's become, um, an official Methuen Lions project. And I think from, from the committee's point of view, that, that gives us kind of three key things that, that are helpful. Firstly, the Lions is already a, a registered charitable trust. So the, the, the moving around of money becomes, becomes pretty straightforward. So it can act as, as a, as a funds repository. And what the Lions can also supply is a ready supply of labour for, for working bees. There's seventy-five members who, when they put their mind to it, can get something done fairly quickly. Um, and their minds definitely are on this project. So we, we've set ourselves the mission, uh, to encircle the township of Methuen with a walking and cycling track. And, and that means to complete the loop around, around the town. And to enable people from all walks of life, none matter what their, their physical capability or their age is, to be able to use it at, at any time. So, um, it'll be for walking and, and cycling and for those hells granny vehicles that you see around the, the place. Um, and to pick up on a line that, that, that the council has used. So it'll be for more people, making them more active, more, more often. In, in terms of name, um, what it is, is the town encircled for walking, cycling, uh, all weather, all abilities, all ages, and everybody welcome. What we're calling it is the Methuen Walkway, which probably doesn't seem that, that much of a breakthrough, but, um, it, it could have been a lot longer, but, um, we, we just wanted to keep it simple, clear and memorable. So the Walkway it is. We've set ourselves the timeline of completing this within three years. Um, and with a bit of that, we can, we can do it a bit, a bit quicker than that. The plan, um, is to, to provide a framework for making walking and cycling both safe and attractive to increase the number of people using that facility. Um, walking, as I've said, includes the use of mobility scooters and anything that's got a wheel but, but no engine. Um, and our aims are to, to, to complete the idea that was first commissioned in the, in the seventies. It'll be about twelve kilometres around when it's finished. Um, and it'll have a number of exits for people wanting to do distances, uh, less than that back to, back to the centre of town. It'll be built in, in three stages with, as I said, a, a three-year timeframe. So to do this, um, we formed a, a walkway steering group with it, within the Lions, um, which allows us to use the Lions charitable trust, trust status for, for funds application and, and distribution. Um, and we, and we've broken the task into three distinct stages and will raise funds accordingly. So these three stages are the racecourse loop, the cemetery loop and the golf club loop. The first stage is the racecourse loop, um, and that goes from the centre of town up Mount Station Road to the racecourse. And then through the council reserve trees, uh, behind that, up to the RDR ditch. Along the ditch, back down to Harding Road, Mount Harding Road, um, and down to the-
Barker's Road.
Sorry?
Yeah, Barker's Road.
No, Mount Harding Road.
Right.
Um, but back down to Time, Time Stream-
Aye, sorry.
Subdivision. Yeah, you're getting ahead of yourself.
Yeah, right.
Um, and back down to the town centre. It's about five Ks and it's, it's been a collaboration between all sorts of people. Um, I've got the total costs attached as appendix. Just bear in mind that the figure, just for the moment, is that a contractor cost estimate is about thirty-five dollars a metre. I'll show you what we've, we've managed to do shortly. So the, the, the red line is, is the, the course, starting from the, the, the centre of town there, up Mount Harding. Uh, you got me at it Pete.
Hit me up there.
Mount Harding, through the trees, down the RDR, down Mount Harding and back, back to the centre of town. Um, it, it's about five Ks. And we're, we're, we're reasonably much along, along the road on that. So the, the, the first achievements in twenty seventeen nineteen, uh, were to clear the track through the trees, uh, to get the trees pruned, sprayed and the track widened. And to spread a silica and shingle based course, track on it. And we've built a couple of bridges and a couple of culverts and put swing, swing gates on some fences. So the, the, the kind of physical task was pretty much completed in, in, in nineteen. Since then, um, we've, we've come down Mount Harding Road. And there was quite some concern from the, the NZTA to keep frost off that road. So we've taken a lot of trees and bushes out, which create shade across the road during winter. Um, we've cleared Grawson Broome, we've got a walking track created off the road. We've put silica and lime, uh, course on it as, as before. There's a, a patch of wetlands where we've put a, a wooden board walkover, built a bridge over the Mount Harding stream. As I say, to an estimated commercial cost of about thirty-five bucks a metre. So that, that physical stage is, is pretty much complete. And there's, there's Ron, Ron Smith and friends at work, um, beg borrowing and stealing, um, all sorts of things to, to, uh, complete the track, to build a couple of bridges, to build a bridge here over the very aptly named Dry Creek. Which wasn't, um, here's us building, uh, the boardwalk over the wetlands and a, and a bridge that's been made um, uh, uh, across the Mount Harding stream. So the next step on, on that is to kind of en- enhance it. Um, and we see that as a collaboration between ourselves, ECAN, ADC, the community board, um, and a whole bunch of community volunteers. Um, we've started putting boulders on the stream banks to solidify them. There's been a lot of tussock planting along those banks. Um, there's been anti-slip netting put on the boardwalks. And, um, we've started the extensive planting of, of native shrubs and things along that track. Um, we think it needs about another forty-five thousand dollars to complete that, that, that enhancement. About twenty-five thousand dollars for materials and about twenty thousand dollars for plants. And I should say, the last time we were here, um, we had a good conversation with the Sinlay Company, who look like they're going to go a long way to providing the, the, the plants to, to do that rather than the, the money to do it. But either way, it works out quite well. And, and I think the key point to make here is that, that, that the labour costs across all of this will be zero because of, um, community labour coming from the Lions and, and various community groups. So enhancing means, um, oh, sorry, wrong button. There we go. Enhancing means, um, this is the boardwalk through the, through wetlands to the, the Mount Harding. It's the Time Stream subdivision up there. Um, and that's, that's the Mount Harding Road there. This place here is the end of the RDR. And we're aiming to plant from about where the red dot is, which is just about here, through, across this area here. It's about four thousand square metres, give or take. Um, and we envisage, um, tussocks and, and all native planting through there. Um, we just need to be watchful of, of what will and won't grow up there. And make sure we plant what will grow in our, in our climate and not plant what won't grow. So that will take us from this point here, which is the corner, sorry, I'm trying not to blind you Neil. Uh, this point here, which is the, the corner of, of the RDR and right the way down this road to join up with this, this pathway here. And we've, we've, uh, made a wee bit of a start of it by, by putting up some fencing only last week. So we're, we're, we're sort of, um, some way down the track, but needing help to, to finish it off. So that's, that's loop one or stage one of the, of the, the proceedings.
To be fair, that's a part of a deal we've done with the RDR. Because they want to cut off the, the RDR as much as possible. That was just a, a rub, rough old gate and a whole bit of rubbish. So we've actually built that and we're going to finish that by putting a small cattle stop through the top there. So people will be able to walk in, in and out and the, the main gates will be shut. And we've got a, a bit more enhancement to do up there with that one as well. But, um, yeah, they've, they've come to the party with, with the cost of the materials and we've done the labour for nothing for them. So it's been a cooper- a collaboration in, in that situation.
So stage two, which is the, the cemetery loop, um, is from the town centre, uh, along Churtsy Road to the cemetery, th- through the cemetery to the back of the AMP showgrounds, across those to Barker's Road. And across Barker's Road to, to Holmes Road and through the trees, um, on the side of that, to then link up with the trees on stage one. It's about two and a half kilometres. Uh, our commercial cost estimate to get that done was about seventy-five thousand dollars. Our materials only cost estimate is about half that. And you can see that going through from, from the cent- centre of town there. Um, out, out through the cemetery, back through the AMP grounds, along Barker's Road and through the, the Holmes Road trees to that point there, which is the beginning of the, the loop we've already completed. So the, the tasks to perform on that are to clear the scrub from the cemetery to the showgrounds, which is easier said than done, as you'll see shortly. Um, to build a sheep fence along the showgrounds boundary. And we've already got the agreement of the AMP people to, to do that. And create that same silica hard chip surface through, through there. To create a pathway from the showgrounds through to the Holmes Road trees and then create the pathway through the trees. And this is the kind of, uh, terrain that we're, we're confronted with in the, in the cemetery. It's, when I, when I said scrub, I'm probably being a bit kind on it. Um, it'll require a, a reasonable amount of, of effort to get, get that through. And then coming through, through the, the trees to join up with the stage one and across the AMP grounds here. So that's stage two. Stage three is the golf club loop, which is the longest of the three. Um, it's from the end of the footpath on Forest Drive, Mount Harding Road junction, along Pudding Hill Road, down past the golf club and reconnecting to town on, on the South Belt is one option. And there's a slightly longer option, which is option two, to go from the end of the RDR footpath along the RDR and connect back through the golf course that way. Either way, it's, it's a fairly hefty task. Um, we'll need to do hard surfacing for any driveways that we, we, we crossed, um, which will either have to be concrete or, or hot mix. It's around three and a half kilometres. We've had a commercial quote on it at a shade under a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Um, we think the materials only cost estimate would come in at around sixty-eight thousand dollars. So that's the, the, the stage three. So that joins up at that point with the RDR. Can either follow the RDR down that way? The battery's gone on the red, oh, never mind. Follow, follow the RDR down to Pudding Hill Road and then back through, round the golf course, back to South Belt. Or there's a slightly shorter version where you could come down here, along Pudding Hill Road and round the golf course, depending on, on how fit you feel. So that's stage three. And if you put, put all three together, then you can see we've, if, when we pull it off, we'll finally have got the, the track all the way around the, 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 the town. So that's, that's the centre of town there. Um, and the, the three elements join up. In order to do that, we need some funding. We, as I said before, um, we need about another forty-five thousand to enhance the, the racecourse loop. Um, to create the cemetery loop, around forty-two and a half thousand dollars. To create the golf course loop, around sixty-eight. Uh, and we've allowed a contingency of, of twenty-five thousand dollars i- in that. Labour costs in that would be zero because of community help. So the total that we need to raise to, to complete that is about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So executive summary, our objective is to complete the walkway. It'll be for walking and cycling. It'll be for all abilities. Um, it's a Lions charitable trust initiative. It's a three-course development plan, the racecourse loop, the cemetery loop and the golf club loop. Stage one's largely complete. Stage two needing forty-two thousand five hundred estimated to complete. And stage three needing the, the, the guts of the, 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 the funding at sixty-eight. So the total requirements are for funding of a hundred and eighty. Now, I can stop there or I can take you through the, the more detailed, uh, costings if you would prefer. I, I'll take your call on that.
As long as you get them, Steve. Can we have a copy of it to our group manager in charge of that?
Yes, I can leave you a soft copy.
Yeah, arrange that over lunchtime. Um, just one other thing, Mr Gard, you sent me some photographs and we saw an example of the Lions' work-
Yeah.
-in that fence. Uh, what do you want to do with those photographs you sent me? Do you want the councillors to see them?
Yep, because I think that is a complete nutty shambles.
So that's the council, the way the council does things, as against the way the Lions does things?
I think what, what I was getting, getting to is that that fr- that bridge is actually a health and safety risk. If you put up some of those photographs, you'll show, uh, the new- contractors have made some effort to fix that bridge, but to me it is a complete and utter cock-up. If you'll excuse the expression, um, it's-
Now, I, I wish to confess that, uh, Mr Gard phoned me as a councillor to go and see, uh, the work being done one Friday, Thursday night, Friday morning. Um, I asked him to supply me with photographs saying he was coming in here today. So that we could all see and he could explain to us all instead of just one councillor going to see. So that's why these photographs are here. If you're upset, if you're upset with me, blame me. Um, you'll see, it's the Mount Harding roadway.
Yep.
Yes councillor Letton?
Thank you, Mr Jimon. Uh, which bridge that's the cock-up you're referring to?
The one at the top of the Mount Harding Road that goes into McCaw's property.
Oh, okay.
That goes over the RDR.
Yeah, yeah, I know what you mean. Yeah, thanks.
From what I understand, talking to the RDR, it was originally, um, a part of the RDR's, um, responsibility. But it was handed over to the council at some stage, so.
So that's the one you had in the earlier?
That's the one we had in the, that's what, what, um, we believe needs to be done on it. If people don't understand, the, the kids go up there and they congregate, they swim in the, in the, in the RDR. They do what kids do up there and they do what kids have been doing up there for years. But that bridge, if we, um, this, this is the sort of stuff. I mean, they, they put a, uh, I mean, to me, that is a health and safety risk. Uh, it is totally rotten. Um, they patched up some of it. What you've got to understand is the kids, they, they, they climb up on the netting, they jump off the top, uh, and basically it, it gets wrecked, whether you like it or not. Kids do what kids do. I believe that if it was, it is to be fixed properly, um, and put up in a substantial way like we've done that other one, it will last for years and years and years. And it would not require any, uh, major renovation or, uh, fixing for a long time. Um, did we get, did you?
I should say that, I should say that the, 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 the cost to make good, this is not included in, in the, the costs that I've just talked about.
Sorry? Sorry? Um, can we get another one?
Can we get another one?
I mean, to me, they didn't even go up there and actually measure the length of timber that they required. I mean, they got halfway there, oh, we're short of timber. And then rather than replacing the timber, they make this Mickey Mouse sort of setup to enhance it. Well, to me, that's only... I mean, yeah, once again, it's... It's poorly thought. I'd venture to say that nobody went up and had a decent look at it before they even started. They turned up, they didn't have enough timber, they didn't have the right equipment and it's just a grimpy shambles.
Okay, councillor Brown, you have a question?
I've got a couple if I can. Basically, the RDR, as I understand, one of the stages you want to do, it's quite a long walk along the RDR, is that correct?
Yep.
Health and safety? Is that a possibility? You can't walk around that without...
Yeah, no, I mean, we're talking about a great big wide path.
Yeah, 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 but it's straight along... The RDR is there.
Yeah, it's along the top of the bank, yeah.
So are you proposing any fencing for children? So, okay.
No.
Your own risk, okay. That was wonderful. Those RDR bridges are the bridges we bought last year, wasn't it? Given, are you given, right?
Given, I can see why, Neil.
Yeah, they keep some giffing. I'm completely lost. I'm not sure where it is. I'm looking at photos like, where is it?
If you go out of Methven, head round to the back of the golf course, you turn up the Mount Harding Road, you're going into McCaws' property. That's the bridge up the top there.
So that is on the private property?
No, no, it's on council road. Yeah, it's a council road.
I might have to go there one day.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, all I'm suggesting is that it is a health and safety risk. It's rotten and something needs to be done about it.
Okay, councillor Wilson?
Thanks, Mr Chairman. Yeah, my question is, we've got a map here and it's got existing trails along the back of the golf club.
Yeah.
Is there something there already, is there?
Along the back of it? No, there's nothing there at the moment.
Those of you that look at your map, there's a...
Hang on, hang on. I might give it a crack. Mr Gard said very early on in his submission that the walkway was a line drawn on a map to show a trail. That is a trail and the Lions are planning something else. Does that make sense?
Perhaps I could clarify that. There's a designated walking track down Mount... Sorry, Putting Hill Road. But that's actually on the tarmac surface of the road, which doesn't make any sense these days. What we're proposing is a pathway off to one side of that. And that's what we'd need to build.
supplementary councillor Wilson?
On my map, it shows proposed one down Mount Harding Road and then down Putting Hill Road proposed and then round the back of the golf club, all the way back to town centre as an existing trail.
No, no, no. It was part of the original Methven walkway where they actually walked on the road. There's no footpath or trail as such there as it stands.
Okay, councillor MacMillan?
Thank you. Hi, Pete and Mac. It's great the work that the Methven Lions have been doing and I've walked up and down those, round the walkway quite often. But just wondering, so you said that the racecourse loop's going to be another $45,000 to complete. How much have you spent on it? I know the community board donated some funding for the bridge and I've given some shingle and bits and pieces. But how much does it cost to date? Have you got a figure?
Well, we've actually spent about 16 grand.
Yeah, yep.
The rest of it's been beg-borrowed, stolen, whatever, volunteers.
Yep.
So, yeah.
So that's for the boardwalk and all that sort of stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I think, and Dan might correct me, but I think the community board paid for the wee bridge that went across and I think three to five grand of shingle, maybe something like that. So, and that probably leads to my next question is, I know you've got Ronnie on this committee and Ronnie's on the community board, but is there any other way that you're kind of collaborating with the community board with this project or do you not?
Well, I mean, as you've just stated, Ronnie's on the community board, so he is the coordinator between the two projects here.
Okay, we might need to work on that, I think, going forward as well.
Okay, councillor Rawlinson?
Thank you, thanks for your presentation. Just going back to that bad repair on the bridge, Peter, how long ago was that done and who did it?
Heb did it and it's about, it was just before Christmas.
Oh, it's just recent?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions from councillors? Well, thank you councillors, thank you Methven Lions, thank you Mr Gard, thank you Mac. Well, now, that's the end of hearing the submissions. We'll move into decision mode. Lunch? You want me to adjourn for lunch? You sure? Okay, we'll adjourn for... How long do you want to have lunch for? Twenty minutes? Quarter past one? One twenty? Okay. So the submitters that are here at the moment, I'm sure your local councillors, Letham and MacMillan will take you through for lunch. So I'll adjourn until twenty past one.
Brilliant, thank you very much for your time.
Question, and the question is, Councilor Carolyn, have you read and understood all submissions?
Yes, I have.
Thank you, let's clear that up. Otherwise, it was going to make it rather difficult, Councilor Robinson, wasn't it? Okay, Tony Durham, when you're ready, we're going to start apparently on page six. And Tony, you're going to put some key messages, well, the key yes or no to make the decision, up on the board. So the first one is, should the district's mountain bike track off-road network be acknowledged in the walking and cycling strategy? Who's first councillor on the block?
I'd like to say yes, I think.
Okay, we have a yes.
That would be a good addition.
Why?
I would say yes to that, and if we recognise them on the side of our strategy, it will enable them to be able to get funding for their tracks.
Councillor Letham?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. What do we mean by acknowledged?
Someone explain to me what...
Yes, Tony, well... Thank you, through the chair, so we've been putting a little bit of thought to this, and we will put more to it. And what we think we might do is, we have some acknowledgement within the strategy right now around the fact that these facilities exist. We think we'll have an appendix or something included at the back that actually maps out in details a little bit more about what these facilities are, what they do for our district. But we need to be mindful, the purpose of this strategy, it's a transport strategy in terms of connecting people from point A to point B with their walking and cycling. So that's what the focus is, and that's what the action plan will be. So this appendix will reference that we have these amazing facilities, they're an important part of our recreation and quality of life. But it won't be committing council to anything at this stage. When we get to the sport and recreation strategy in the not-too-distant future, that's where we'll be able to make those linkages back into the great work that's being done.
Thank you. Okay, Councilor Robinson?
Totally agree, and as I just said at lunch, if we could get as many people on bikes in the urban areas in this district as there are on the mountain bikes and off-roads, we'll have won the war.
Okay. Councilor Abraham?
I'm the same, I'm in favour of it. They certainly do acknowledge them, and hopefully link them in years to come.
Councilor Fallowen?
I'm going to play the devil's advocate. To me, what we're talking about here, to me, mountain bike and off-road is not part of our bread and butter business. Basically, what we'd like to do is moving citizens, whether it be on foot, bike, or road, from one point A to point B type of thing. To me, mountain bikers or off-road should not be any part of it. But to be fair, I don't mind acknowledging them for the work that they've done, but that's it.
So you actually agree with the question? Is that correct? Councilor Letham?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, that's the challenge I have, just saying we acknowledged that the off-road network be acknowledged in the walking and cycling strategy. What, putting a button, what the hell does that mean?
Okay, you're asking me?
Well, I'm just asking someone who might know the answer. What does it mean now? Tony's actually said, well, we just acknowledge that it's there, and we say that it's good for the district. But does that lead to something else, or what?
Okay, you go, Tony, then I might go.
Um, we'll certainly be very mindful of the language, that we aren't committing council or leading council down a certain path without council having to make that decision. That would, in my mind, sorry, I'm just thinking on the, as I'm speaking, the sport and recreation strategy is where a lot of that commitment from council would get picked up, if that was deemed appropriate in the future.
Thank you. To me, councillor, if it's any help to councillors, this council's core function is not to have a hospital, or fund a hospital, or make decisions about a hospital in Ashburton. But I see as a core activity...
Question, and the question is. councillor Caroline, have you read and understood all submissions?
Yes, I have.
Thank you, let's clear that up. Otherwise, it was going to make it rather difficult councillor Robinson, wasn't it? Okay, Tony Durham, when you're ready. We're going to start apparently on page six. And Tony, you're going to put some key messages, or the key yes or no to make the decision, up on the board. So the first one is, should the district's mountain bike track off-road network be acknowledged in the walking and cycling strategy? Who's first councillor on the block?
I'd like to say yes, I think.
Okay, we have a yes.
That would be a good addition.
Why?
I'll say yes to that, and if we recognise them on the side of our strategy, it will enable them to be able to get funding for their tracks.
Councillor. Okay councillor Letham.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, what do we mean by acknowledged?
Eh? Tony.
Someone explain to me what.
Yes, Tony, well.
Thank you, through the chair, so we've been putting a little bit of thought to this, and we will put more to it. And what we think we might do is, is we have some acknowledgement within the strategy right now around the fact that these facilities exist. We think we'll have an appendix or something included at the back that actually maps out in details a little bit more about what these facilities are, what they do for our district. But we need to be mindful, the purpose of this strategy, it's a transport strategy in terms of connecting people from point A to point B with their walking and cycling. So that's what the focus is, and that's what the action plan will be. So this appendix will reference that we have these amazing facilities, they're an important part of our recreation and quality of life. But it won't be committing council to anything at this stage. When we get to the sport and recreation strategy in the not-too-distant future, that's where we'll be able to make those linkages back into the great work that's being done.
Thank you.
Okay, councillor Robinson.
Totally agree, and as I just said at lunch, if we could get as many people on bikes in the urban areas in this district as there are on the mountain bikes and off-roads, we'll have won the war.
Councillor Brown.
I'm the same, I'm in favour of it. They certainly do acknowledge them, and hopefully link them in years to come.
Councillor Fallowan.
I'm going to play the devil's advocate. To me, what we're talking about here, to me, mountain bike and off-road is not part of our bread and butter business. Basically, what we'd look to do is moving citizens, whether it be on foot, bike, or road, from one point A to point B type of thing. To me, mountain bikers or off-road should not be any part of it. But to be fair, I don't mind acknowledging them for the work that they've done, but that's it.
So you actually agree with the question? Is that correct? Councillor.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, that's, that's the challenge I have, just saying we acknowledged that the off-road network be acknowledged in the walking and cycling strategy. What, putting a button, what the hell does that mean?
Okay, you're asking me?
Well, I'm just asking someone who might know the answer, what does it mean now? Tony's actually said, well, we just acknowledge that it's there, and we say that it's, it's good for the district. But does that lead to something else, or, or what?
Okay, you go Tony, then I might go. Tony?
We'll certainly be very mindful of the language that we aren't committing council or leading council down a certain path without council having to make that decision. That would, in my mind, sorry, I'm just thinking on the, as I'm speaking. The sport and recreation strategy is where a lot of that commitment from council would get picked up if that was deemed appropriate in the future.
Thank you.
To me councillor, if it's any help to councillors, this council is, its core function is not to have a hospital, or fund a hospital, or make decisions about a hospital in Ashburton. But I see as a core activity, a core thing for our people is that we must have a good hospital in Ashburton and a good health system. So we acknowledge that we need a hospital, we acknowledge we need a good one, and we acknowledge that we have to update it from time to time. And I think that's the acknowledgement that we should also give the mountain bike and off-road network. If that helps, I don't know whether that helps with Tony, but.
Hang on, councillor Lovett.
I was just going to say again, they said, well, I don't know whether it was Dan this morning, or someone made comment, if it is acknowledged in the district-wide under, under council that these tracks exist, it enables them to be able to go to other funders, helping them to get funding for their tracks. That it's just not, just a little group kind of mucking around, they are acknowledged within the, in the system.
Okay, I'll go to Mr first, then I'll come back to councillor Brown.
I agree with your saying about the hospital, it's about the same as the schools, it's about the EA Network Centre, it's about all the training grounds that we have out there, the football clubs, whatever. Part of our walking and cycling strategy is to make certain that people can access these particular pieces of public infrastructure that we have. And the idea that we acknowledge if you want things, basically, I'm suggesting that, like the Skills Park, the area over here at Mitea Tin, where we have the Skateboard Park, et cetera, those areas have got to be accessed through our footpath and walking and cycling strategy. We don't actually have to be involved with them, but we should acknowledge that they're there and make certain that we can access them in some sort of way, that's what I'm saying with our document.
That's good, everyone in agreement? You've got the words right, Brian, thank you. Tony, we'll move on to the next one. Should the, should council provide a greater level of assistance to mountain bike, mountain bike community groups? So do you mean that, is that question meaning we actually write them into budget? Or that we continue with the grant?
After listening to the submitters this morning, this is probably more sitting down the LTP Budget Workshop side of things. Council has community grants it gives out at this point. And to have it as an actual line item would need to have a fairly good case, and council would need to be fairly comfortable with that. So probably this one, I think, should be pushed to the LTP workshop discussions.
Okay councillor McMillan.
Thank you, can I just ask a question? So Mr Fabish talked about a user group, which I'm presuming that's sort of the Hakateo River Trail group sort of starting up again. I'm just wondering, how would you include your Mountain Heart Bike Park and Bike Methvin and those other groups? Or would they sort of come through the community board, or how would you connect them, just so that they're not left off as well?
Just for you, Mr Chairman, what was raised by councillor McMillan is a good point, but I think the, probably the biggest focus at this stage should be the Ashburton River Trails, and, and getting them operating as efficiently as they possibly can, looking at opportunities. But then I think rolling out further, we could then look at those other off-road trails as another group in the rest of the district. Most are focused up in Methvin, around the Skills Park and the, and the main trails.
Okay, councillor Brown.
I think what Tony said is correct, it's LTP. But I can see them going for grants, community grants, that's where the money is, where we can help them there. We can't just give rates to them or put it in those areas. So I'm quite happy to give them assistance, but through the community groups and fundings.
Councillor Letham.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, I think if we've acknowledged that these groups exist, we should make all efforts perhaps to keep in touch with them, so that if they do need something, we can point them in the right direction where they may be able to get assistance, and whether that's through council grants, or whether it's through another community service organisation. But let's just keep a line of communication open, so that they know what we're thinking and we know where they are.
So councillors, are you happy with the lines of communication approach? Okay, that's that one done. Should council lobby NZTA more for walking and cycling access over West Street? Right.
Absolutely, one word.
Done, next one.
Can I, can I?
Oh yeah, if you want to.
Well, we've heard from Methvin, and we know there's a problem on Rakai as well. Would it be prudent to get NZTA here to a meeting and, as well? And point it out, because we're pushing it through the road safety and we're sort of banging our heads against a brick wall. I think they need to front up.
So do you, do you, if, if I can make a suggestion, a huge suggestion that should council lobby NZTA for walking over West Street slash state highways? That would cover Methvin as well?
Yep.
Councillor Brown, you're against that, yes?
No.
Good. Helpful, Tony?
Yes, it is, Martin just asked a quick question.
Martin? So the submitters here today, they have asked for a crossing point for the Overbridge, the Rail Overbridge that assists to the Domain and the museum. So currently, this is not a project in the walking and cycling strategy. Would you like to include this into that one, the actions plan?
Councillor Letham.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. What do we mean by lobby? Because we could write a, a letter to NZTA and ask for more walking and cycling access over State Highway One, and we've all agreed we should lobby them. So we could write a letter, and then we say, oh, we've asked them and they've said no. So what do we actually mean? Are we going to become aggressive? Are we going to actually put a case towards them? Are we actually going to take the photographs and the videos and get the statistics? And if so, who's going to do it? I'm not trying to belittle the question, but should council lobby NZTA more for walking and cycling access over West Street? We can just say yes and do some little minor thing and disappear. So I think we should, at somewhere, whether it's today or somewhere in the long-term plan, or however we do these things, we should really have a good look at how we should go about that. But I'm certainly in favour of lobbying NZTA.
Councillor Brown.
We were concerned about the Over, Over Bridge near Domain. We've got good crossings here in front of this building here for scooters. Why are you going to try to go up and railway track and over the railway and try to get back on the other side?
Excitement.
That is for walkers. If you can't walk properly, there are some really good crossings in this town. I think we start going too far with certain parts.
Councillor Robinson.
I think a good, a good starting point for this would be through the facility of our road safety group. Because we've got NZTA in attendance, there's usually two or three people there. They do seem to be taking on board things that we discuss with them. And I think that would be a really good way to start this, rather than just aggressively lobby from nowhere. Use that forum to start the ball rolling.
Okay, Mr Mayor, Mr Mayor.
Yeah, 1.5 of the strategy has got this in already. For getting across, the highway is looking, looking at Walnut Ave, West Street net's underway, put those lights in very, very shortly. There, the same issue was raised in the Domain Development Plan of connecting the bridge with the Domain, the overhead bridge with the Domain. And I can't recall what the outcome of that was, but it was, well, I think it was the lights at the Walnut Ave corner will do the job. And there's lights, as councillor Brown says, just out here, which do the job. So, yeah, I think we've already covered it.
Okay, councillor Cameron.
I have an opposing view, I think we do need to facilitate access from the overhead bridge across to the Domain. I think it's a block either side, it's not easy for everybody to do that. And regardless of whether they should do it or not, they often do not do it, because they cannot face the hike to, to the potential crossing. So I do think we need to facilitate access, because that overhead bridge is used a bit. And I also think with regards to lobbying NZTA, I assume previous councils have lobbied NZTA for many years, because we were dissatisfied with the bridge, we're dissatisfied with the walk, the path on the bridge. We're dissatisfied with the whole process of roading through the town. So it's been singularly unsuccessful lobbying the NZTA in the way we have done it. So I think we need to lobby them a little bit more assertively, and make sure we see some change. Or, yeah.
Councillor Wilson.
Thanks, thanks, Mr Chairman. I'd only be in favour of a mid-street thing outside the overhead bridge. We're going to have traffic lights at the corner here, and then traffic lights at Walnut Avenue. We can't, we've got to have a little bit of thought of the traffic passing through. I would be opposed to traffic lights, I mean, a pedestrian crossing at the bottom of the overhead bridge, it'd just be too much. But just one of those things in the middle of the road, whatever you call them, island, I'd be in favour of that.
Councillor Fallowan.
I'm certainly not in favour of pedestrian crossing by the overhead bridge. But what I am in favour of though is a refuge where pedestrians can safely stand in the middle of the road. I mean, you say, a number of councillors have said, well, we've got lights either end, you can walk to those to get across. Well, I just think we've got lights here at Havlock Street, two blocks down, we've got a refuge outside Argyle Welsh, and that's only a block. So what's the difference between having a refuge there and having a refuge? Because I know there's a hell of a lot of people go from West Street over the Overbridge to Countdown every day. There's a lot of people walk to work that way. And to me, it's probably one of the crossing points, which is probably one of the more dangerous in this town.
Okay, we'll go to councillor Cameron, then I'll go to the vote. Councillor Cameron.
I think I, I agree, we do need access across from that bridge, because it's very, very busy. And with regards to the lights in town, we also have lights at Countdown, we've got lights every blimmin' 20 metres just about, we're overlit. That's my opinion. So I think if you did consider lights, it's not going to change the, yeah. But if we have something there, a designated area to cross, I think it'd give a lot of people peace of mind.
Okay, those in favour of a refuge across the bridge, golly thought, done. Refuge in Methvin. One, two, three, yes, done. And it be done through the Road Safety Committee. Geography lesson, Stuart? You want to give them a geography lesson? Okay, thank you, Tony, 2.5 is. Should additional pathways be included in the walking and cycling strategy action plan? If so, what? We have a submission on the famous Racecourse Road, one Charlesworth to Allen Street. Those in favour, that it go to, into the group of projects for the long-term plan, please raise a hand. Thank you, is that year one or year two, those in favour of year one? Okay. What other pathways, there were some from Donna. Oh, that's page 11 of the strategy. Summary document, page 11.
Mr Chairman, just asking, what pathways are you talking about there as far as Racecourse Road is concerned? Is it Racecourse Road only?
I said, oh, well, I made a point of Charlesworth to Allens, because we actually had a submission on it.
Because if we're talking Allens Road.
No, we're not, I'm talking Racecourse Road, Charlesworth to Allens.
But there's nothing on Allens Road at this particular point in time?
Yes, there is, there's a nice big footpath.
Comes up as far as the stream only.
Sorry, we're across purposes here, I'm not talking Allens Road, I'm talking to Allens Road.
To Allens Road on Racecourse Road.
Yep. I expressly said Charlesworth to Allens. Why I said that was, we had a go at getting it in when we actually wrote the strategy. We were told to, it was left until we waited till submissions, am I right councillor Lovett?
Yes, yes, yes.
Then we turned around, we had a submission on it, so it's been a pit, pit topic of mine, so I thought I'd hit it.
Yep.
But anyway, we've got additional ones here on page 11. Do you want that list to go to the annual plan, or what do you want to do? Maybe, maybe it goes to long-term plan.
Yes, I put long-term. I was just going to ask about Seafield Road, because that's a really busy road down there. And what footpaths or tracks are there off-road for the chi, for all the kids that are going to school?
Seafield Road, done.
It's called a car, right, okay.
So this is the existing footpath we have.
Stuart?
Stuart. And it's for Enns Road that stops in the way. Through the stream.
Councillor Robinson.
My question follows on from that, Martin. So the developer of the new Lockley, elderly people's place there, are they obligated to put any footpath outside? They're not, okay, thank you. But I think there are submissions for Allens Road as well, but I guess that's got to fit into our long-term plan.
The problem with Allens Road is that the current level of Allens Road is well in excess of what it requires for the proper levels to come off the properties on each side. So Allens Road itself would have to be dropped something like half a metre. So there's quite a large cost in doing that section of Allens Road from Racecourse Road back to the stream. And in doing that, we would do the footpath, curb and channel, et cetera, at the same time. And that was part of the reasoning why the Lockley subdivision wasn't encouraged to put the footpath there at this stage.
Councillor Brown.
Thank you, Mr Chair, so we're looking for putting a pathway into Allens Road, what is by, and there's where it's end. So it doesn't connect to anywhere. Why are we trying to do this? There is no connection, so it's not connecting anywhere else. And if they want to walk, there's enough walkways around it. I think it's a waste of money at the moment, especially with the development there on Cantor's Road, Allens Road, and the top end of Racecourse Road in the moment. I think time will solve it.
Councillor Cameron.
I think, again, I have an opposing view, I think Allens Road, the traffic is close to the, to the verge where people walk, and it's quite a good speed, and the traffic is getting bigger and bigger, so that's why they want a footpath. When you get onto Allens Road, the verge is a lot wider, it's quite a wide area to walk down. So what are the costs, do you think, associated with going up to Allens Road, like Bull Park? From, from.
Charlesworth Drive.
How much is footpath of, like, not, not a major, no, well then. Then I think. Yeah. We've had, I mean, I'd admit we've only had one person submit on Racecourse Road, but we've had a lot of, individually, a lot of people have contacted us with regards to Racecourse Road. but we've had a lot of, individually, a lot of people have contacted us with regards to Racecourse Road. And it is a blimmin' busy road, yeah. I mean, I'd like to see a footpath down there.
councillor Wilson.
Thanks mister chairman, is there any curb and channeling on Racecourse Road up to Allen's Road? Is not. I, I wouldn't be in favour of perhaps down Allen's Road at this stage, as you say, because it hasn't got built up yet and it's going to be a major, major job.
Where the hand is Stuart, is where we want it.
Yes, yeah.
councillor Robinson.
And just again, back on that same spot, I think the walkers that walk, when they go up Racecourse Road, they'll find, they'll come through that new development of Lockley because there is going to be that access way to walk right on through. So the bikers and the walkers will soon find that they can cut through there and they won't need to use the rest of Allen's Road.
Okay, so. The list on page eleven. Submitters have support or suggestions for footpath plans. Submitters have suggestions on specific roads or pathways. That that goes through to the long-term plan. But this hearing panel wishes Racecourse Road to be in there named, is that correct? Okay, thank you. Yes Tony.
So there's, uh, the, one of the simisters is proposing a shared network to include Seafield Road from Ashburton to the airport. This is not included in the current walking and cycling, but this is one of them.
Okay, so you wish to go along Seafield Road all the way to the airport?
Yeah, a shared path, yeah.
Shared path. So what's a shared path?
Yeah, so the shared path hasn't fully been decided yet, but, uh, for kind of like a rural area, might be similar to what we have built in like Graham's Road.
Right, councillor Wilson.
I'd say no, until we get, built up areas get footpaths.
Yeah.
Um, we've got enough strategic walking biking that we're going to support or help or acknowledge. I think until everybody's got a footpath outside a full residential area, that I would make that a higher priority.
Those as a councillor Heatham.
Thank you mister chairman, what about a cycleway down Seafield Road to the airport? Is it? Eh? There's the road?
Tarsy old one. Okay, so the Seafield Road one. No, agree, agree with councillor Wilson, okay, done. Next one.
To the Christian school?
Christian school. I thought we were leaving these, I thought we had agreed to leave these two later on, but the chair is always in the, the committee, the meeting always rules the chair, so. Are we doing them separately now, are we? Okay, Christian school, who wants a pathway to the Christian school? No difference to Seafield Road.
Way different to Seafield Road. It's a school. It's going to a school.
Okay.
There are more kids bike to the school than they would to the airport.
So the agreed, the, so the agreed position is that we do, as councillor Wilson suggested, do the housed area first. Councillor.
I would make an exception for a school, I mean, I think, I think Christian school just because their role's increasing quite rapidly and they're even going to intermediate, is it, or they're expanding, so the school's a school. If we're going to make forty K in town, I think I would justify a shared track down there.
councillor McMillan. Oh, Robinson.
I agree on the Albert Street one, I mean, we've watched that school grow from small beginnings. It's now got over three hundred pupils and it's secondary as well and it's obviously going to keep growing. So I think we do have to look at it from a safety aspect of, of them wanting kids to bike to school there. That we should be considering a footpath or some cycle walking way, it may not be a footpath, it might be like the Graham's Road pathway, but something there for them to get safely to school because vehicles do speed down there, even though we may have lowered the limit.
Okay, councillor McMillan.
Was it, was this not already included in, in its proposed? But I thought it had been brought up last year as well.
Yes. It was brought up last year in the annual plan. Councillor Brown. It was brought up, but it didn't happen, councillor Brown.
Yes, I, I'm getting lost a wee bit where we're going, but that's fine. Um, the Christian school, I'm quite happy to get in the pathway for a safe, shared path from town to the school, to be quite honest.
presenter one, mister Fith.
Just, um, as far as the school is concerned, it's in zone D, as is, uh, Racecourse Road subdivisions, as are the ones off Tinmore, Westfield, Mayfield. At this stage, we have not asked any developers to put footpaths in any of those particular subdivisions. Uh, the main reason being is that under, uh, zone D, it is semi-rural and being semi-rural, footpaths are not required. The Christian school, when they decided to build, uh, out there, knew that they were in zone D, they knew what the requirements are. Uh, now that they're getting a little bit more established there and getting a little bit bigger, they want to have a footpath out there.
councillor Cameron.
Fact remains it is a school, whether it's in zone D or in the middle of town. So if kids, if kids are biking to school, then we have a responsibility to make sure that they arrive at school safely. So I think we need to put a footpath out there.
Okay. councillor McMillan.
Can I just ask a question, would it be better to find out from the school how many children actually bike and walk first before we commit? Um, because there's no use building a footpath. I mean, they may want to in the future, but I think you just need to get an idea.
Tony.
Thank you, through the chair, so, um, just at this stage, um, there is a proposed shared network up to the Christian school in the plan. So if we leave that in the plan for the finalisation and then the actual details of what the, what that path may look like in the future can be determined once the team get there.
councillor Cameron.
Just a final remark, it is the walking and cycling strategy and we are, our stated goal is to improve the ability of people to walk and cycle. So to do that, we need a footpath and the way to do that is get our kids biking and walking. So can't do that without a safe access to the school.
Okay. All set? Okay, Tony, we go to the next one.
Actually, I think we can skip the next one because it was on, um, Racecourse Road.
Yes, that's right.
So we've already made that decision, so we're up to two point seven, which is Methven. On page fourteen, sorry.
All those agreeing with the words on the board, please say aye, aye, those against, carrot, carrot. Done, you can move on to the next one. Well, no one put any lights on, come on. councillor Brown.
I've got a question, what are the additional projects? Can I have them one by one, please?
Yeah, so if we look at page fourteen for back to Methven, uh, one of the simisters asking for some maybe cycle plan for Methven. Since we have done it for Ashburton and hasn't, we haven't done it for the minor townships. And they're asking for cycleways to connect to the free schools that's close proximity.
Um, Martin, could you do me a favour?
Yep.
Your boss, the one that works for council, told me. Little finger and thumb to the microphone, I'm struggling to hear.
Yeah, oh, this is better?
Thank you.
Okay, so one of the simisters is asking for a cycling plan for Methven pretty much. And since, uh, there's free schools in close proximity, that there may be a chance, uh, cycling will be effective in the smaller towns. And, uh, it, it could be considered, uh, for, based on staff comments and uh, what we think right now is, uh, we would fix up, uh, Ashburton first before we move on to Methven and Rakaya for a walk, uh, cycling plan.
Okay, those in agreement, please raise a hand. Yep, done Martin, yes. councillor Brown. councillor Cameron.
Just a quick question Martin, when you say deal with Ashburton before we move on to Methven and Rakaya, like, what are we looking in regards to timeframes? I mean, a child to get in school, Methven's the same as, and a child getting school in Rakaya is the same as a child getting to school at the Christian school, don't we? We sort of can't be waiting five years or, what are we anticipating?
Uh, so from what we've seen in data, it seems like a lot of, uh, for Methven and Rakaya, the schools around there, there's a lot more students that actually, uh, walk and cycle to, uh, their schools compared to Ashburton. Seems, seems to be wider and further, so maybe it's because it's just a small town and this lower traffic volume that this, in that town environment, they're more, they feel more safe to travel to school in active transport.
Sorry to interrupt, so more children, uh, getting under their own steam to school in Methven and Rakaya?
Yes, that's what.
Through no footpaths and no cycleways or not as good as they could be, footpaths and cycleways?
Uh, Methven have, uh, footpaths, so I believe they are using that as kind of their, their, hmm, the route. I'm not too familiar with how, uh, if they, like for Rakaya, it's just, there's not, not enough footpath, but it, it seems like students still travel to school.
One, one more supplementary, is that okay please, mister chair? Um, okay, so when you mentioned earlier, shall we sort out Ashburton and then sort out Methven and Rakaya? What does that involve, like how long do we sort out Methven and Rakaya?
Uh, I would say, I can't really give a definite comment, but maybe after, uh, this, no, or the next.
We don't want to be waiting for another five years to be sorted out, is my point, like, it'd be like, it'd be good to have them on a, on a chart, we just work through them quickly.
Sorry?
We can look at it in the next review in, for years.
Yeah. Okay. councillor Heatham.
Uh, thank you mister chairman, uh, oh, have we gone back to Methven, I thought we were on Rakaya, sorry.
Oh. Methven, Methven. Okay, councillor Robinson.
I think all the towns deserve similar respect because they've all got kids that have to safely get to school. But just could I ask some, someone from Methven, do many kids in Methven bike to school now?
Yes. Uh, order, 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 sorry, sorry Peter. I'm going to have to cut you off, but the councillor's got your answer, the answer was yes.
Well, I was hoping councillor McMillan might answer too.
councillor McMillan. Sorry Peter.
I'm just going to have to go, thank you, um, you do see some cycling to school, but majority walk and a lot scooter. Um, to be fair, but you've also got to realise that there's a lot of, um, school buses that are coming in as well. Um, but biking, probably not as much as scootering as wa, in walking. Sorry Peter to kind of disagree with you, but I just see a lot, a lot of kids scootering nowadays.
councillor Brown.
Mister chair, could we just see the map of Methven again? So what is exactly in there now and what is not, because I think we talk a wee bit, not knowing what we're talking about. So what is proposed, that is what the proposals are, is it, or the existing?
So the blue is the existing footpaths?
So all the dotted ones are proposed and solid lines are existing.
Okay.
And there's no, uh, cycleways for Methven.
Okay, so they've got footpaths and they've got everything else there.
Yes.
So basically, why are we talking about it then? Just to be clear, you know, we, we, if the footpaths are there, why are we going to push something through, it's all there? Or do, or do I miss something? It's existing, the schools are, it's existing all around the school.
So the simulator's asking for cycleways, so right now we've got footpaths, they're now asking for cycleways for Methven and Rakaya.
councillor Raw, uh, still got councillor Brown there, sorry.
Yeah, I've, I've, I've got a question, if we're going to put this in, if we're going to put this extra part in, it can't be done before it's getting passed, is it?
It's going, it's only going to in the long-term plan then, isn't it?
So it's just going, okay, right.
councillor Robinson.
And that's what I was going to add, was if in the long-term plan, we can get that, these roads that they want footpaths on one side, which some are in that school area, that will help solve all of that as we go forward, but it can't happen right now, but it will in the long-term plan, I guess.
It's a strategy to work towards.
Yes, it is, yep.
save.
Just through the chair, maybe just to clarify that, remember all of these strategies that council do, does and plans, that's what, um, influences the LTP, but, um, it's really the LTP is what, um, you take advice from the, from the guidance, the strategies and you outline your programme. So even though you have got it in your strategy, the strategy is, is often for a life of more than one LTP, so it'll be your guiding factor.
Okay.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yes.
Thank you, I don't know who can answer this, but, um, what is the sort of guidelines around ages of when children can bike to school? Is there, I remember years ago, someone saying they had to be eight years old. Is there like a national guideline or is there a policy or something about ages of children biking to school, do you know Martin?
Uh, sorry, I actually don't know this one, I might be able to find out.
Okay, all happy, that Rakaya, Methven, minds are all in the strategy, yep. Okay, two point.
Just, mister chairman, just Rakaya. Um, additional projects, what are the additional projects in Rakaya you're heading in?
So on page fifteen of the summary document, um, there's a simulator has raised about the, the cycling network not being included in the strategy, like we haven't included in the proposed strategy for Methven either. Um, and also there was a suggestion, um, about a walkway to get to the Rakaya River.
Yeah, I read his submission.
Hmm.
And it talked about she works at the preschool, would like to take the kids down to the river on the walkway. Not sure if that's a good idea or the parents would like that, bigger preschool, how old are they, two, three, four or less? Um, there is walkways to the river, we can see them, they're called trails up there. Um, fishermen access, jet boaters access them, I don't think they need to be any bigger or better than what they are. They are what they are and trails into the river. What is probably missing there is, um, Pitt Street, I don't know if Pitt Street is sealed yet or not. In Rakaya. It's not. Yeah, that's an area that needs to be looked at, it's fully, I understand it's fully housed now. There's no curb and channel, there's no ceiling on most of it, it needs co, connectivity to the township.
We'll look at that for the final plan, strategy, sorry.
Steve, he searched the web.
Thank you, Mister Chairman.
He found it.
I've just found an article in two thousand sixteen from Radio New Zealand, and it was referring to some Wellington primary schools. And it the the school had indicated that um they should be about ten or eleven um in in order to get the schools permission for them to bike on their own. Okay, so um but that's four years old, um and it's it's based around some Wellington schools, but it's it's a guidance for you.
Right, Tony, where are we up to now?
We're up to page fifteen um to two point nine, which is the schools and promotion. Um.
Well, it sounds after Steve's answer that we have to get schools to give permission or for the schools to promote it. So we need an educational program, is that right?
Well, in that, possibly, and that does tie in a little bit to um your submitter that you heard from this morning around um understanding why children aren't biking to school and breaking down those barriers and working alongside the schools. Um. It's vaguely in the strategy at this point, it probably isn't as prominent as that. If you wanted it to have more prominence, we'd have to alter things slightly in the action plan.
Well, who would agree in making it more prominent? Those against making it more prominent? Sorry? The school, the getting children on bike, bikes and walking to school. We heard from Steve that it's that's indicated from Steve, that it's the schools that decide the age, that the people can bike to school from his web. So we're just gonna sit back and leave it, or we're gonna say to the schools, hey, how about you get your children to walk and and um cycle for a good feeling? So you don't wanna do that? No, okay. I go back to my hospital story. Um councillor Letham?
Thank you, Mister Chairman, I I am confused. The question says, should additional consideration for schools and health promotion be included in the walking and cycling strategy? Now, you can't answer yes or no to that because you don't know what the stra- you don't know what has, what someone suggesting be included, there's nothing in here that I can see that needs to be included. So I I I think some of these questions were being asked as a bit ambiguous really. But I wouldn't be in favour of any addition to what we are proposed in the in the plan.
Okay, councillor Cameron?
Um I think uh the role of the council is in the rate payer is to provide um conduit so that people can get to school in the form of roading and footpaths and cycleways, not to be getting out to the schools and telling the parents, get your kid on a bike. Personally, I think it's up to, also, I'm not sure, uh I don't know that it's necessarily the school's decision. I mean, I suppose they can say you can't bike, we're not accepting bikes for kids under ten, but I think it's probably more the parents would have a say as to whether their children bike or not bike to school.
Okay.
I don't think there's a legislation, um because often parents walk along beside kids on little bikes anyway, I don't think.
Councillor Lovett?
We have saved for Ashburton and I think if we had did some promotion with them, through them, and we have had a request at one stage, um the old tennis court in the domain, whether we could put a street layer there with giveaway signs and stop signs for parents and schools could use to teach the children. And and that would, you know, be promotion, the hard surface is there, whether you could paint lines on it.
Okay, councillor Walson?
Once more, I'll use the Hines School example. They decided it was quite dangerous for kids in rural areas to bike with. So they've spent nineteen thousand, the kids raised the money themselves year five and six to make a bike track all around the school ground, so that kids can learn to ride bikes and learn rod- road rules, all that, a school initiative. And I agree with councillor Cameron. It's up to the school, if they want us to do something specific regarding uh conduit to get to school, they come to us. But we leave it to the school to decide whether they encourage kids to bike or walk, or it's up to the parents. Most parents will say, in a busy area, I'm not afraid to send my kids biking to school. I'd rather bring them so so they're safely there and home. And I think that's a parent-school decision. So unlike councillor Letham, I don't really know what we, all we can do is do um access that we're asked for, not to tell them whether they can bike to school or not.
Councillor McMillan?
Oops, thank you. Um. Yes, I agree, we can't tell them whether to bike to school or not, but I think we can promote cycling as a as a safe method to get around, which is kind of what we're doing anyway. Um I do like um Lesley's idea, um and Lynette just mentioned it about the um safe space for kids to learn to bike and ride, so that's come from safer communities. And um the L T A Bike Challenge, I just sent the information through to Tony about that, which is something that we could promote as well, so it's promotion, I think, is is a good idea.
So those that agree with councillor Walson and McMillan? Yes? Yes, to, is Tony?
Sorry, not to get involved at the point where you're trying to make a decision. I guess it would be good to know if you want to give officers the direction to look into that um safer communities proposal, to have a safe space for kids to learn to ride their bikes and scooters. Um if you could give us a little bit of direction, um whether it fits with this plan or into some open spaces.
One, two, three councillors, yeah, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Councillor Brown?
My question would be, uh Tony, what was in the original um part that went out? You know, what, you know, we we've got the uh promotion in schools already. So what is the ones we do? Because we're talking about additional consideration of schools and health promotion.
Yes, so within the action plan, there is an objective um to coordinate the promotion of walking and cycling to increase participation. Um that includes school travel plans, um information packs with businesses on travel planning um and promoting events that encourage walking and cycling. So potentially the the um safer communities proposal in terms of having that space is a little bit extra than what we had originally proposed.
Okay, yep, thank you.
Right. Must be up to we're now two point ten. Access to E A Network Centre.
So there was some suggestion from some submitters that there needed to be increased connectivity into E A Network Centre. Um. It is a part of the thinking anyway, um but I'm not sure if you want to include anything additional.
Um Steve, would you like to comment please?
Um it's just through the chair, part of the work that we're doing or proposing to do in the next um few years is to look at that utilisation study, the E A Network Centre, whether to expand it or what activities would be included in there. And part of that would be looking at that um connectivity from the main road down. But also, it was always in the proposal from the E A Network Centre back into the industrial area. So so I think it might be wise to leave that until we do that study and that will drive, that will drive what's needed.
Agreed. Councillor Flanagan?
Yeah, getting into E A Network Centre is a bit of a hassle in actual fact if you're on foot. Sure enough, they've got the refuge centres in the middle of the road. But then as soon as you get across the road, you're on the driveway and you've got bloody cars going up and down the same driveway as what the pedestrians are. To me, there's a bit of a health and safety risk there.
Okay, councillor Cameron?
And it's not just the pedestrians, it's the people on the scooters that go for swimming. Yeah, it's it's not really, it's not ideal.
Right, so it's on the radar, happy with that? Okay, two point eleven.
This is a little bit of a catchall area because there are a number of submitters um who talked about different health wellbeing, um drivers of why council should be um promoting and spending in this walking and cycling space. So I'm not sure if you want to give any more attention to um the health and the environment side of things than what we already have in the current plan. Um up to you.
Councillor Letham?
Thank you, Mister Chairman, I think the current plan will be more than adequate for now. I don't think we need to have any further change.
Councillor Brown?
I I'm exactly the same.
Okay, those in favour? Yep, done, thank you. Two point twelve, Walnut Avenue.
Again, this was really just to 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 take the time to acknowledge the submitter who's who supported what we are planning. Um. There hasn't been a request for anything further than what we proposed in the draft strategy.
That's good, two point.
So it's S S then?
Yes councillor Brown?
S S, I'm quite happy with this.
Okay. Uh two point thirteen, signage and maps.
So council does have um like pla- objectives and plans in the strategy around signage. Um and certainly listening to our submitters this morning from the mountain bike clubs and organisations, we'd certainly be looking to work alongside them.
Everyone happy? Councillor Walson?
Yes, regarding, thanks Mister Chairman, regarding maps, how long ago did we revise the map that that green map that uh Ashburton with roads and sort of the hospital and things like that? I think tourism, did the experience Mid Canterbury put it out? What maps have we got that are current for Ashburton Town? Because a lot of them have got new subdivisions, we've got all sorts of different changes. And that map, I think, is pretty old, there was a, one of the submissions used it, oh, David Howden's.
Yes.
I don't know how old that might be, twenty years old that map. Who was, does the council do that? Who, which department upgrades publicity map for the district? Is it Experience Mid, Ex- Experience Mid Canterbury or who?
Through the chair, in the past, it has been um, oh, was it Tourism Mid Canterbury back in the day and then Experience Mid Canterbury? But I guess now it's left in a little bit of a a a void, um so to speak. Certainly the maps that we've used, uh we just took the latest information that the teams had and and produced them ourselves, we couldn't find a single source of truth, so to speak, that was gonna do the purpose, just sitting around. So it's potentially a little bit of a black hole right now.
So what do you wish to do about it councillor?
Well, that was my question, is it a council responsibility or what? It's perhaps our tourist division should be told that they must have map, they have maps on various things, because I'd like to see them incorporate the Methven mountain bike in their tourism propaganda too.
Um, oh sorry.
Steve, ju- just through the chair, I I think that's a valid point, and I think the maps that are probably being referred to are the tier maps that tear off the pad we've got on our front counter. Unfortunately, maps are 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 outdated, as soon as you get another subdivision put in, another road extension. But um it is Ashburton centric, but um I might raise that back with our comms team and also that economic development team, is there is there a way of getting them updated?
Councillor Letham?
Uh thank you, Mister Chairman. Um if you just go to Google Maps, they're usually as up to date as anywhere you go and you can see them all, you can expand them and contract them and find your way around, so as Mister Fabby says, printed maps are becoming outdated.
Councillor McMillan?
And that's what I was gonna say as well, wouldn't it be better just having a tab on the um A D C website with a link to um all the walking and cycling that you can do? Um but the tear off maps that used to, with the Ashburton ones here and then we have them in Methven. Um the eyesight used to produce those. Um and I know Methven has just updated them, but the eye hub in the Mount Heart Memorial Hall has pretty much paid for it to to be done. Um because it's a useful tool for the town.
Mister Mayor?
Rakaya has its own map and the Rakaya Community Association paid for it, they did it themselves, um which is available in the shops out there for people to use. Just thinking about Mister Howden's um submission, he had a a plan there for a cycle um track to bike for whatever kilometers, what do we want to do with that? Is it a good idea or is it not a good idea? Should it go on a map or should it not?
Well, that's what I think the Methven Lions did. When Peter Guards opening comments, many, many years ago, they put lines on maps to show where there was a possible trail. And it's ended up, it's gone through the cycle of not being wanted, is wanted, reactivated.
Councillor Flan?
Yeah, looking at the practicality of Mister Howden's plans, certainly um the urban uh bike around type of thing sounds good, but in actual fact, it's not possible to do. Because it's not possible to get from Middle Road through to Argyle Park and one or two things like that. I think as far as this rural one is concerned, that's eminently possible and probably Lean's already done it. And um as far as the Stour River one is concerned, so I don't have any problem about those two being included. But until we can get the urban one, which is probably going to be the most popular, um we really can't move forward with that one.
Councillor Walson?
I'm just looking on the Experience Mid Canterbury webpage and they've got everything you could want to know about biking, bike Methven, Stoke Cycles, Mid Canterbury Mountain Bike, or the the River Loop. Um they're all there, and all the ones David talked about out at Lake Stour River, so it is there, just gotta find it.
So councillors, you're happy with status quo? Okay. Two point fourteen.
With this one, it might pay just to look at the actual um submissions on page twenty in the summary document. Just to see if there's anything there that's mentioned that you want any specific, specifically included in the um final strategy.
Um is the, just remind me, Tony, is the uh what we saw from Methven Lions along the R D R around Methven, is that in the strategy at the moment? As a possible trail? No, it's not, is it? No, so would it be a good idea for the Methven Community Board to um bring that to council? To go on our official website and be acknowledged? No?
No, no, sorry, I'm just um, so the map from the Methven Lions, to have that on our website? Or to have that included into our strategic plan?
Both, but should it come through the Methven Community Board or can it come straight through here now?
No, this is, you've you've received a submission and you've heard a submitter talk about it directly and they've provided you the information, so if you'd like that included, we can make that happen.
Okay, I'd like to do that. Councillor McMillan?
Yeah, good idea, I think, that I think some of the, if you look at the map, some of it's already in there as existing.
Yes.
But just add those, um the extra through the um symmetry, loop, et cetera. Add that through and and I think that's a good idea.
Okay, all happy? Good, thank you. So what about the um R D R walkway alongside the Ashburton River from R D R or further? The Gribb submission, second one down there? No? Okay.
Mister Chairman, what what are we actually discussing though?
Well, I'm looking on page twenty, I'm looking at summary of submissions.
Yeah, okay.
Is there anything else you want to include? Like, for example, do you wish to include future plans to create a cycle walkway alongside Ashburton River from R D R?
No.
No, okay, done. Councillor Walson, uh councillor Flan?
Um yes, far as Hucktree River, Lakewood, Rangatawa River, I think they've been acknowledged, we don't need to take them any further.
Okay, happy with that councillors?
Yep.
Good. Okay. We covered all that, I think we've got that. You got the ans- you got an answer, Tony? Okay. Uh Tinwall, Ashburton River water. Should council include any additional requirements? Should council include any additional priority for this in the walking and cycling strategy?
So again, this might be one to look at the specifics. Um, you'll see on page twenty, uh, Margaret Campbell and Jenny Muir, they were talking about some quite specific details around the Tinwald Viaduct and the Ashburton River Bridge. Um, staff have provided a comment, um, the improvements will be part of the business case objective in one point four B of the strategy already. Um, so that's covered, as long as you're happy for that to stay in as it is.
Mr Mayor?
Just thinking about the Ashburton Bridge and those little bike cycle lanes on the side or walking lanes or scooter lanes, whatever you call them, and you can't pass on them. I thought this, um, was the opportunity to have that, um, addressed. And the suggestion has been to put a little passing bay on them. Um, so if we put it in a plan here, then it would progress somewhere, no doubt.
Certainly, that's our, our strategic direction for walking and cycling is to have that facility available, so we could have it here.
Yeah, so a passing bay on those little bridges.
Okay. All those in favour of passing bays on those little bridges? Done, thank you. Councillor Robinson?
Thank you, that was one of the ones I was going to bring up. And just going back to Margaret Campbell's comment, she would be one of the biggest cyclists in our town, she bikes everywhere, but when she goes home and goes under the viaduct, the reason, the piece about the mirror, she said it's actually quite dangerous. And Lane, you bike there, you probably know that, that, um, it's very hard to see cars coming from Malcolm Street, um, and they come around there and, and you're on a bike, you make a decision to go and a car comes whooping around the corner. So that's what that's about.
So would you, do you want to, uh, do you want a mirror there?
Well, I think that we need to go and have a look at it or the riding teams and work out where it would best be. It needs a bit of homework done on it, put it that way.
Ref recommendation to riding team?
Just to have an investigation of that, yes please?
Councillors, be happy with that?
Could we, it just, it was just straight cycles, way and no cars?
Councillor?
That's another day.
Councillor Fallowen?
Yeah, I certainly support the idea of the, uh, mirror on the, um, Tinwald Viaduct and sooner it's done, the better. It's a health and safety risk.
Councillor Wilson?
Thanks, Mr Chairman. I see somebody suggested another safe crossing, um, Archibald Street. At the moment, you've got two walkways coming from town down the approaches, but there's no way to crisscross. And if you at Lushingtons or want to go west, there's no safety barrier in the middle till you get away down near the, yeah, the Shell Garage, that corner there, just, so there's a huge expense. People go to the doctors and park on the north side of the, yeah, the north side of the road, it's difficult to get across. No matter how careful you are, with the intersection of people going down Wilkins, um, artists, terrorists, and, you know, there's a whole conglomeration of roads. And how, if you come across from town on the west side of the river to get into the east Tinwald? So we should perhaps add to NZTA lobby, as you call it, a barrier in the middle there outside Lushingtons.
I think Tony's got the answer for us.
Thank you. Um, so in the strategy at the moment, we do have an objective that's, um, uh, particularly around improving crossings over State Highway One in Tinwald. So that's part of it right now.
Leave it in? Councillor Cameron?
Yeah, I was actually, Stuart, I was just going to say exactly the same thing. When we had that meeting prior to Christmas, it was going to be, it was already on a, a high priority, we moved it to a short term priority, didn't we? The crossing of Archibald Street so that people could access the bridge, both sides of the bridge.
It's sitting, sorry, through the chair, it's sitting in the strategy at the moment as a medium priority over the medium term, so that's two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-seven.
Didn't we discuss that and bring it forward? Didn't we say, well, why is it listed as a, you know, when we had the external consultation, people said it's a big deal?
Mm.
And then we said, well, if it's a big deal, why have we got it listed as a medium priority? We were going to swap it round? I'm sure we had that conversation.
Would you like us to, we can change that in the final?
Absolutely, and I think we need to get NZ, we need that, there's a lot of things with that bridge, but I think a passing bay is a good start, but it needs more than a passing bay, you need to get out there and someone has to do some assessment on it because you can't get through scooters down either side of those footpaths. And also, while we're talking about it, needs a sprinkling. I remember Rukai was done years, you know, a few years ago, it looks smart, but Ashburton looks a bit scrappy. A spring clean.
Oh, spring clean.
Two words.
Right.
So this is just another example, I think, of how we need to have some action with NZTA and I don't know how we do that, but we're not going group to sort of treading water, we're not moving ahead, yeah.
Right. Mr Mayor?
The access, um, from Tinwald from one side to the other will be addressed when the lights go in at, um, either Zed or the next intersection, that intersection or the next one up. Okay. That'll get them from one side to the other, way down by the supermarket.
Councillor Robinson?
I don't totally agree with him because you, I see every day when I come out of Wilkins and Turnright, you see people ducking across that road, as Stuart said, to the medical centre and also to the cafe. Um, if they're northbound and they've got a caravan, they'll pull in on the wee labour that's there and there's always people standing in the middle of the road, ducking and diving to get across that highway. So I think if somewhere between Wilkins and Lushingtons, if we had a refuge, probably closer to Wilkins, certainly would maybe help safety in getting people across that road. And the school kids too, because that's another big issue. I've got a twelve-year-old granddaughter who will no longer bike to intermediate, getting from east side of Tinwald to intermediate, she's given up.
Councillor Cameron?
Uh, just as, uh, uh, addition to that, I mean, this is the walking and cycling strategy to promote walking and cycling and that is a big hindrance, as your granddaughter, that's a big hindrance to walking and cycling, is the bridge. And also, since the lights have gone in at the countdown, the note, the rear end whacking, you know, banging into each other has accelerated and that will only get worse unless we do something on the other side. What do you call it? What do you call those bumper? Take the lights out, would, that's right, that's right. Why are we sitting there for aeons and aeons? Yeah.
All set? Sorted? Cycle networks, do you wish to have any more so? A, uh, one that Councillor Fallowen talked about, Tinwald Urban Rural Pedal or the Country Rainbow or the Mount Barossa? Do you want those included? Tony? Councillor Wilson?
I've got a question, I'm, I'm not a biker, but that Mount Barossa that David Howden was talking about, could anybody just go up there and do it, Lane? I mean, without promotion, you can, it's ex, available to anybody that wants to, this, this, that's my question.
Yes, I, I didn't realise that to be honest, I knew it was there, but yes, you can go through it, that was, I asked them this morning and spoke to them afterwards, yes, you can.
Yes. Happy with that?
Yep.
Councillor Robinson?
And just adding to that, if we refer people to the website of Experience Mid Canterbury, it's all there, all of that information's there. And because we fund them, we should be promoting it through that channel, I think.
Good, Tony?
Thank you, through the chair, so just to clarify, the reference to those will be, will include something in the strategy around there are other cycle networks within the district that don't fall within Ashburton, Methven or Rukai and it'll be a point to?
Yes.
Yep, rather than, I, we'll just get a bit.
I think that's what councillors are asking for.
Done, thank you.
Yeah.
Just a quick question, is the Experience Mid Canterbury website linked to the council website and is it easy to find all that cycling information?
Just, uh, yes, it does, but I, I think, um, medium term, that isn't going to be a solution for anything. Uh, in that very shortly, this council will be contemplating, uh, the very, um, existence of Experience Mid Canterbury and the main manner in which we deliver visitor promotion might be in a very different way. So, um, Experience Mid Canterbury, I don't think is a medium to long-term solution, but the material that is contained on their website, uh, we need to find a different way to link either through Christchurch, New Zealand or, um, directly on our own site.
Okay. Councillor's page twenty-two. Twenty-two, um, two point seven, public amenities. Porters.
I think we should.
Councillor Brown?
I think we should consider that, Digby Park, consider it if it's a possibility.
Okay. Councillor Levitt?
I, I would agree with that, but I'd also like us to look at it Tinwald, whether we put up big signage on the main road, that there's toilets over at the Tinwald Domain because there's the people that are just stopping along the main highway and walking out of their cars behind bushes along the railway line, is, it's shocking because there's no toilets in Tinwald.
Order, we'll have an update please from the rec manager in charge of toilets. Steve?
Thank you for the introduction, Mr Chairman. Um, part of what you'll be considering later today is, um, some funding towards updating our open spaces strategy. Part of that work that I'll do on there is actually looking at our public toilets for the district. And I've done these studies before and you identify the key, um, key assets such as a sports field versus a neighbourhood park, should it have a toilet on it and what sort of services should it have? What distance from a public toilet should the CBD be, all that sort of thing? So if you're able to wait until that process happens, that will give you some really good guidance.
Okay. We'll keep going then and get to that process as fast as we can. Councillor Macmillan?
Thank you, it's not toilets, I've moved down, is it, okay?
Yeah.
Um, just about the, um, bike parking and, uh, storage, so they've mentioned storage about, which looks like lock-up storage. I don't think we need that, but maybe a few more bike parks around town or bike racks.
Bike racks.
Yeah.
Tony?
So within the strategy, um, currently we've got, uh, like a bit of a review planned, um, under objective two point two B to look at bike parking and storage within the draft strategy as it sits right now.
That's what you're after, councillor? Councillor Cameron?
Um, there are bike racks currently in town, which are very rarely, isn't infrequently used, in fact, I've never seen them used at all. But, um, there is a move to electric bikes, so I think we need to consider, uh, bike racks for electric bikes rather than just normal bikes.
Certainly, Mr McCain showed me that, or, um, Chrissie showed me a photo of what the new bike stands are going to be like and they'll be dedicated for all sizes of bikes. Yep.
So those, those electric pushbikes you're talking about, is that like the one that passed me when I was doing thirty K along Havlock Street the other day and the guy wasn't pedalling? Okay, two point eighteen, are we finished? Future plans? Okay, two point eighteen, fut, uh, sorry, yeah, future plans. Current goals, measurable future council appraisal, plan lacks guidance on required financial commitment, whether it's going to come through the long-term plan, uh, action plans, Councillor Cameron?
I was just going to support that, I, it's very hard to make decisions when we don't know what the other side of it is, like the balance, like the cost. Like we knew a footpath was approximately ten thousand dollars to a hundred metres, it's just easier to have some sort of view as to how that would affect then our rates and what, what the impact would be. Uh, we're sort of making decisions in an abyss, I suppose, and we're deciding what is ideal, but it's not often grounded in reality if we don't know the timeframe and, and approximate ballpark cost.
Yeah. Tony?
So through the chair, just to support what, um, Steve spoke of earlier, your strategy documents sort of sit here as the high-level direction, so to speak, so we want to go down this path. And these are the priority areas and then when it comes to your actual L T P budgets, that's when you say, okay, we can afford to do eighty-five percent of what we hoped to be able to do and therefore these are the decisions that will have to be made accordingly. So it, I, yeah, it's, I understand what you're saying, it's, um, but we have to have this direction, otherwise we come at you at a long-term plan and it feels woolly-nilly, for want of a better word.
Further, just one more remark? Thank you, um, and I take that point, that's a fair point, you have to have an aspirational goal and you have to have things that are priorities. But when we talk about it like the bridge, we want that done now, we don't want to wait five years, we want, so everything, racecourse, road, footpath, we want that done next week. You know, so things that we're talking about now are not, we don't see that as twenty years' time or ten years' time.
Well, you've done well, councillor, if that a flame, Chief Executive.
So if it needs to be done quickly and council needs to provide the resource quickly and then we will do it quickly. So, so as long as the resource allocation, which is in your hands, matches the aspirations and our plans, then we can deliver on, uh, your, uh, needs and wants. But if the resource is inadequate or, um, pushed out, then no matter how much you want it to be done quickly, we will be unable to do so. So the resource has to match the ambition.
Okay. All happy with the status quo? Okay. We'll move now to page twenty-four of the documents and, Wacko, we've done that this morning, page twenty-five, we've done this morning, um, page twenty-six, yes, you're stopping me, Tony.
No, I certainly wouldn't want to stop you, Mr Chair, I certainly wouldn't want to stop you, Mr Chair.
Away you go.
I have just had a quick review as we've been sitting, talking here, um, and I couldn't see anything additional that was raised in our place commentary to what you've already considered. Um, so it, up to you if you'd like to plough through it, um, but I couldn't see anything that jumped out at me that was new compared to what you've already heard.
So councillors, are you, having read all the strategies and listened to all the submissions, you're, you believe Tony to be correct? You do? Well, councillors, subject to the writing up of the strategy, we have completed the task for today of listening to submissions and making decisions on the submissions. And now, Tony, I understand you rewrite the strategy and bring it to a council meeting, is that correct?
That is correct, yes. It will probably be mid to late February before you see it again.
So you, I suggest, just a personal suggestion, you hang on to all your papers and everything for that, council, in case you think Tony has got a sentence wrong and then you can produce all the submissions to show that she was outweighed by submitters. So, um, thank you, councillors, I, uh, close the hearing and look forward to having.